All right. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the San Bruno City Council Meeting of July 13, 2021, beginning at seven o'clock. And I will ask our city clerk if she could please take role.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Here.
Councilmember Mason is currently not present. Councilmember Salazar?
Here.
Vice Mayor Marty Medina?
Here.
Mayor Reed Medina?
Here. Thank you very much, and I appreciate Councilmember Hamilton in leading us in the pledge. Thank you for doing that.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Hamilton. Now we'll move on to item number three. Public comments for items not on the agenda. Individuals allowed up to three minutes. It is the council policy to refer matters raised in this forum to staff for investigation and our action where appropriate. Brown Act prohibits council from discussing or acting upon any matter not agendized pursuant state law. If there are folks that wish to speak on items that are not on the agenda, this would be the appropriate time. Please raise your hand. And we'll ask our city clerk if she could please assist me in bringing the phone set.
Yes, first we have Nancy Foreman.
Can you hear me?
Yes, whenever you're ready.
Great. Good evening, mayor and councilperson. First off, I just want to say a big thank you to Public Works for working on the drip and valve systems in the planters downtown. And second, I'd like to thank San Bruno for having the sidewalks downtown power washed. It makes a huge difference, and I hope you'll continue to have this done. Downtown's starting to look a lot cleaner and brighter, and I want to encourage you to continue to put your efforts into our downtown. I recognize that the wind plays a large part in the garbage swirling around, and I believe our city can do more. Here are just a few of my suggestions for some five-minute projects. One, remove the fallen sides of the garbage cans. They're a safety hazard. I often find them laying on the ground. Two, remove the newspaper racks that a certain someone is using for personal storage in front of Starbucks. Three, make the merchants who throw their grease in the cans clean up and power wash around the cans, especially if we're getting new garbage cans. Four, fill the areas around the trees and bring the dirt to grade level so no one trips into the depth of the area. And five, have code enforcement keep our presence, the presence of the storefronts that have closed up to some kind of code. A lot of them have paper on them. The paper's ripping off. The windows are dirty. I believe that we can make downtown look a lot more presentable with just a better presentation in the closed storefronts. And thank you all very much. I'm done.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please.
Next, we have Paul Wapinski.
Good evening. I was just wondering if there is any timeframe for a return to in-person council meetings? And I have a suggestion that even though, or in the future when we do go back to in-person, I suggest, I recommend that you keep the Zoom for people who can't attend the meetings but want to speak. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Are there any other folks that wish to speak this evening on items not on the agenda? This would be the time in which to raise your hand, please. Seeing both their hands up, we will move on to announcements and presentation. First item, item A. Not vaccinated against COVID-19 yet? Now is the time. There are two options. Find a free vaccination site. You can visit smchealth.org, vaccine clinic calendar, or call, just call 211 for San Mateo County, and the county partner operator will get you situated with clinics, or you can certainly go online, which has been quite a bit now, for visitmyturn.ca.gov, or you can call 1-833-422-4255. Again, that's 1-833-422-4255, or other local sites, including our local pharmacies. So just again, I think our council is behind it. We think it's important, and we encourage you as well, and there are many options and opportunities. Moving on to item B, recognizing Judith Pacini for her years of service to the San Bruno community. That's something that we want to acknowledge as a community, and I'm going to be presenting an award on that behalf. And there is a lot of verbiage, but this person has given decades to this community, and so I think it's appropriate to acknowledge those achievements, accolades, and the service and love that she has for this community. Recognizing Judith Pacini's years of community service. Whereas Judith Pacini has resided in San Bruno for 60 years, committing passion, time, and energy to improving the quality of life, with a focus on youth in San Bruno and San Mateo County as a whole. And whereas Judith Pacini, whose children attended the San Bruno Public School grades 8 through 12, volunteered in leadership roles to support the education of all children in the San Bruno community, including being PTA president in both the San Bruno Park and San Mateo Union High School districts, and was appointed by superintendents in both school districts to serve on numerous advisory committees, including long-range planning, school improvement, and sports, and being selected chairperson of many of those groups. Whereas Judith Pacini was promoted to increasing roles of responsibility during her 16 years on the staff at Cappuccino High School, culminating in her appointment to executive assistant to the principal during those 16 years on the staff at Cappuccino High School, was honored and revered for her dedication to enriching school climate for students, staff, and teachers in ways that are legendary. And whereas Judith Pacini, long after retirement, was still assisting Cappuccino High School in a volunteer capacity, including mending and laundering school sport team items and uniforms, and helped to create the Cappuccino Alumni Association, serving as the board vice president, committing hours weekly to connecting alumni in meaningful ways with the school and writing successful grants to enhance educational programs to support Cappuccino's vision and mission. And whereas Judith Pacini, exemplary service in the San Mateo County, included appointment to the grand jury, and the Superior Court and Board of Supervisors to the Juvenile Justice and Delinquency Prevention Committee, serving for 12 years, and to the Board of Directors for Parents Who Care, present in 17th District of the PTA, coordinated the drug diversion program for Project Pegasus, and coordinated South County Schools Drug and Alcohol Consortium. And whereas Judith Pacini has served on the City of San Bruno Culture and Arts Commission and on the Board of Directors of the Western Arts Volunteering at the Gallery in San Bruno. She has always been honored and was by the San Bruno Chamber as the San Bruno Volunteer of the Year, and by the City of San Bruno to receive the Congressional Service Award presented to her by then-U.S. Congressman Tom Lantos. And whereas Judith Pacini pursued training and volunteered in programs that educate and empower youth to make positive choices. Under peer pressure, she has also been a dedicated volunteer at St. Andrew's Church in San Bruno, including teaching and being superintendent of Sunday School and the bestry member. And now, it be, now therefore let it be resolved that I Rico E. Medina, mayor of San Bruno, and on behalf of the City of San Bruno, gives the mayor's honor award and expresses our deep gratitude to Judith Pacini, who has for six decades been a role model for what it means to give of oneself unselfishly to improve her community and the lives of others. It is my honor to do this to somebody well-deserving, overdue, but very important. And these were the times of before Facebook and posting or Net Store. You did it. You did it because you had a commitment, a desire, and a passion to leave things better than you found it and to make a difference along the way. And Judith Pacini, AKA Judy, has done just that. We are honored and proud to have her and to have the ability that she touched many lives from when I met her as a student at Cappuccino High School to today. So it is with my honor and privilege to award that her and thank her again from a grateful community. Now we will move on to item C, receive an update on the September 14, 2021 gubernatorial recall election. Uh, city clerk?
Yes, thank you, mayor and city council. Just one moment here while I get adjusted. Is everyone able to see the presentation thumbs up? Thank you. Okay, first off, tonight we are going to discuss the gubernatorial recall election, which has been declared by the California Secretary of State as to be held on September 14, 2021, as well as to give you an update on the November 2021 election. One second here. So earlier this month, the California Secretary of State did announce that September 14, 2021, that is a Tuesday, would be the gubernatorial recall election date. This is a state election. It will be held in all counties across the state. And because this was announced later than normal, July is a pretty late date to announce the September election. Um, we also were faced with SB 152, which was adopted on June 28, 2021. SB 152 basically states that we would have had to have called an election prior to June 15, 2021, in order for us to be able to consolidate a local election with San Mateo County so that it would fall on September 14, 2021, the gubernatorial so that it would fall on September 14, 2021, the gubernatorial election. Because we did not do that, because frankly, SB 152 was adopted on June 28, 2021, we were unable to place any ballot measure on the September 14 election date. Now, there are some details here that are bulleted. I won't read them all to you. I'm sure they can get a little confusing because they are directly from legislation, but it details what SB 152 is as far as the details that we need specifically for local elections. So basically, what it's saying on F2 is saying the original date on which the special local election was called is not more than 30 days before and not more than 30 days after the date of the gubernatorial recall election. What this means is if we had had a resolution to create a ballot measure to place with the gubernatorial recall election date, we would have had to have picked a special election date ourselves, and that date, in order to be consolidated with the gubernatorial recall, would have had to have fallen within 30 days before the September 14 date or 30 days after that date for us to be eligible to consolidate. And because we had not done so, we, we don't, we cannot qualify to place any measure on the September 14 election date. So for this kind, this next slide here is for September 14, as well as a potential standalone election in November. Keep in mind, there is no set November election this year that has been announced. Typically, in even years, there are elections in November. Odd years, there are special elections in November, and there has been no special election date in November from San Mateo County announced at this point. Scenario one that we have listed here in relation to estimated election cost, it has to do with the special election consolidated with the gubernatorial recall election. And as stated on the previous slide, this, this scenario is not viable because we're unable to consolidate due to the details in SB 152. For scenario two, for the standalone city special election, perhaps that's in November, it would be a special election date that we would basically be creating. We did receive a quote from San Mateo County Elections Division in May of this year that gave us a quote, a price quote of $421,000 up to $505,000 to hold an election, to have one ballot measure placed on a special election in 2021. We had asked specifically for November 2021, no specific date, just November, and that was the quote that we were provided from San Mateo County Elections Division. Now, I did want to note that the City of Belmont recently asked, for their own purposes, for a, for a standalone special election in November 2021, no specific date, for two ballot measures, and they were given a price quote of $681,600 up to $817,920 for services rendered by San Mateo County Elections Division, should they hold that special election. So at this time, we have no date. We are, we, we've taken the information for the gubernatorial election, as well as the quote provided from San Mateo County, and this is what we have for any potential 2021 election. If you have any questions, I would be happy to assist.
We could stop sharing the screen, and then I'm, please, and then I'm going to call on council member Mason, please.
My connection's not too great. I just wanted to say that given the, given the cost would be the same amount to fix one whole park, I just want to say that I wouldn't support that special to the election at this point.
I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't get some of that.
Let me try to, can you hear me?
Yeah, why don't you try again?
Yeah, I was just saying that given, thank you for looking into November, and given the cost of the, of a special city election, I just, I wouldn't support it at this point. But I really appreciate the work put into this, and, and hopefully, next time, we would kind of get ahead of the ball around the June 15 date, if there, if there is a next time. But I just wanted to thank you for getting the work done, and again, for the cost, that would be, you know, the cost to fix an entire park for us in downtown. So thank you so much.
We got that. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? We do have somebody from the public, and if, city clerk, would you be kind?
Uh, yes, let me pull up the timer, just one moment. And the speaker is Paul Wapinski. Just one moment while I bring you in.
Yeah, I may have missed it, but what was the special election for? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Yeah, I, I think I missed it during the brief, but what's a special election, or what was the special election going to be for? That was all I had.
Mayor, did you want me to take that, or did you?
Yeah, you can. Thank you for asking, and please do, city clerk.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Wapinski. The proposed special election for November would have been to have a rotating mayor instead of a directly elected mayor for San Bruno.
Thank you. Seeing no other hands up, and none from my colleagues, we will go ahead and move on to announcements and presentations. Item D. Receive a report from the San Bruno Police and Fire Departments regarding July 4, 2021, Public Safety Operations. And we'll turn it over to our police chief, and then to our fire chief.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If you can give me just a second, I'll try to get my video turned on here as well. Sorry, I'm having some technical difficulties here with Zoom. Uh, city clerk, are you able to stop my screen share? Am I the only one who's able to stop that? Thank you. Try this again.
Would you like me to pull up the presentation?
No, I have it. It just got stuck in the screen share mode. Thank you very much. That should do it. Okay. Are you able to see my screen now? Great, thank you very much. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, and members of the community that are watching from home. My name is Ryan Johansson. I am your Chief of Police here in the City of San Bruno, and I'll be joined this evening by our Fire Chief, Ari Delay, as well, in effort to give a brief recap of our Fourth of July safety operations, the annual report we give following the Fourth of July to inform everybody about our operations, the statistical data, and the outcomes. So digging right in here, a little bit of background information. So Safe and Safe fireworks are permitted in San Bruno. This is via voter Measure G in 2005 through voter approval. And as a result, the Fourth of July presents a number of safety challenges for police and fire, not only on the Fourth of July itself, but really in the days immediately prior and immediately following the Fourth of July. Mostly, this pertains to the use of illegal fireworks before, during, and after the Fourth. But also, we have problems with large unruly gatherings, the increased use of alcohol that comes with the celebrations. And this is always exacerbated to a certain degree when the Fourth of July falls on a weekend, which last year fell on a Saturday, this year fell on a Sunday, so the last two years have been a bit busier than most with it falling on a weekend. Some of the things we do immediately to address this are really an expansive education, prevention, and enforcement operation or campaign every year. And it's important to understand, and we'll talk a couple of times here today, about the fact that the operations are almost entirely funded by the sale of Safe and Safe fireworks, taxes that are imposed on those sales. And nonetheless, while we do the best we can, and we're going to talk a lot about that here this evening, all this education, prevention, and enforcement does not and will not ever stop the use of illegal fireworks in the City of San Bruno. Pre-Fourth of July, we engage in a number of operations in an effort to get out ahead of this problem every year. The first among those is that we complete a robust incident action plan, and this really is a plan that is fairly extensive. It incorporates a unified command between police and fire, accounts for all the contingencies that you can imagine could occur from an emergency perspective for the Fourth of July, pulls together all of our different resources, and really gives marching orders to the line level as to what they're supposed to be doing before, during, and after the Fourth, in an effort to keep the celebrations as safe as possible. We also create a joint public safety announcement with fire. This gets built-in video and then is disseminated through our various social media platforms numerous times before the Fourth of July in an effort to educate the community year over year about the potential dangers of use of illegal fireworks, the legal ways to use Safe and Safe fireworks, and the potential penalties associated with using illegal fireworks or misusing Safe and Safe fireworks. We also conduct safety meetings with all of the booth operators to ensure that fireworks sales operations are legal and safe, and those are joint with fire as well. We produce educational flyers that are provided with every single fireworks sale at every booth in an effort to make it very clear what is legal and what is not within the City of San Bruno. We also provide similar warning notices in all city facilities. This is a little impacted last year and this year due to COVID and the lack of traffic in those city facilities, but we do it nonetheless, and year over year, this is yet another way we try to get information out before the Fourth of July. The Police Department also maintains a fairly extensive list of known violation locations. So these are residences where we've had previous unruly gatherings during the Fourth of July, or significant levels of illegal fireworks use, or individuals that have been cited for illegal fireworks use. And in the days leading up to the Fourth of July, we actually bring in officers on an overtime basis to make peaceful contact at those locations in an effort to gain compliance ahead of time, to let them know kind of that they're on our radar and that we will be out on the Fourth enforced. We also use a great deal of data to focus our resource deployment. This has to do with mapping calls for service year over year, as well as areas where citations are written. And then also, this year, we were able to utilize our new mobile command vehicle to pull in real-time data as it's developing in the field and populate a map with that data in order to deploy our limited resources as effectively as possible. We also have dedicated enforcement details prior to the Fourth of July, where officers come in on an overtime basis, respond to complaints of illegal fireworks, and canvass the busier neighborhoods for people using illegal fireworks even before the Fourth of July. And that brings us to the Fourth itself. So Fourth of July staffing is a challenge for us. The reality is, many of you have heard me say time and time again in the presentations that lead up to the Fourth of July here at council and on other platforms, all San Bruno Police Department personnel are ordered to work the Fourth of July. This means that regardless of how your days off fall, or what else you might have scheduled, you will be working if you work for the San Bruno Police Department, and it is the Fourth of July. This year, that amounted to 42 staff members, between officers, dispatchers, clerks, and CSOs, 28 sworn and 14 non-sworn personnel. This is eight fewer sworn than in 2020, which means we were impacted four teams. Our city runs in a service of three BEATs, or service areas, and so each service area was minus one two-officer team compared to what it was last year, and then there was an additional two-officer team missing from our detail. This has to do primarily with authorized staffing levels, budget constraints, and then as well, we have injuries and other people who are out and not able to work in the field at present. Many of these officers worked a 16-hour day or more in order to make sure that we had coverage during the busier time of the evening. All of the police BEATs were staffed as usual with patrol officers, plus their dedicated enforcement units deployed. This is sort of important to mention because I think there's a bit of a misconception that, you know, the Fourth of July happens, and 100% of our efforts are dedicated to fireworks enforcement. The fact is that we still have over 100 calls for service in that day that do not pertain to illegal fireworks that need to handle by BEAT officers, everything from domestic violence calls to noise complaints, to all of the normal sort of variety of calls that the Police Department responds to continue, and oftentimes on a weekend or exacerbated on the Fourth of July. The dedicated enforcement, enforcement units consist of both marked and unmarked units, so this means police vehicles that look black and white and have the red and blue lights on top and are immediately identifiable as police vehicles, as well as many vehicles that are not at all identifiable as police vehicles unless they illuminate their emergency lights. This year, we put about 80% of our units out in the unmarked units in an effort to be a little bit less immediately detected in the neighborhoods where illegal fireworks are being used, and we know that in past years, many of the people using illegal fireworks are incorporating the use of lookouts, and the black and white vehicle is spotted from a very far distance and makes it increasingly difficult to issue citations. So we deployed a few more unmarked units than marked this year. We use both uniformed and plainclothes personnel. We have undercover officers that are on the streets in plainclothes, not immediately identifiable as police officers, many of them on foot for a large part of the evening in order to get in closer to where illegal fireworks are being used, and to conduct the observations that are needed to direct in marked units to come in and issue citations. We also, the last two years, have employed undercover surveillance units. These are vehicles that are very nondescript and designed to conduct recorded surveillance. They deploy into neighborhoods in an effort to conduct observations that they can then, again, direct via radio to bring marked units and issue citations. This has been particularly effective the past couple of years, but it is a somewhat limited resource in that we only have so many undercover vehicles available that are not easily spotted as police cars, and we also only have a certain number of our personnel that are qualified or certified to work undercover in plainclothes. One unfortunate consequence of staffing restrictions this year is that we did not have our bicycle units out. Bicycle units, while slower than vehicles, obviously, and have a little bit more difficulty getting around town quickly, are actually quite effective in navigating through the streets undetected on the Fourth of July and getting in and issuing citations, and we were not able to staff our bicycle units due to minimal staffing this year. In addition to all of this police staffing, we have dedicated fire department staff, which Chief Delay will talk about in a few moments here. We also have dedicated Parks Department staff and Streets Department staff, Parks to help us keep the parks clean and clear and free of any kind of danger throughout the evening, and then Streets Department for what ends up being a very large-scale cleanup operation following the Fourth of July every year. So specifically, calls for service this year. On the Fourth of July, the Police Department handled 298 calls for service. This is 10 more than last year, so pretty standard for a Fourth of July on a weekend. The peak activity period, once again, was about a two-and-a-half-hour window from 8:30 PM to 11:00 PM. During that period of time alone, we have 152 calls for service. 185 of the 298 calls for service on the Fourth of July were fireworks-related. This is three more than last year, so again, fairly consistent with what we see on a Fourth of July when it falls on the holiday, or on the weekend, I'm sorry. And most of the reports we get, as I reported last year, are actually really quite vague and marginally workable at best. And this is somewhat important information for us to convey to the community. We're, we're always, many of you have heard me speak many times over the years about the importance of the pioneers of our community. The Police Department, you know, for us, you truly are our force multipliers, and policing the community has always done in that collaboration, where we need the community to report violations so that the police can respond to them. But fireworks violations, by their very nature, being very transitory and being often not really directly observed in terms of who's committing the violation, result in a lot of reports that quite frankly clog up the phone lines, clog up our radio lines, and divert officers from more productive enforcement activities. Calls like, you know, "I'm on such-and-such hundred block, and there are tons of orders and illegal fireworks going off." This information can still come into the Police Department. It is often reported through the non-emergency line, and that information is put out as information to units out in the streets, so they kind of know if they're in that area to check it. But we have found over the years that officers being free to conduct their own proactive enforcement, when they see a violation in an area, it takes some time to hone in and slowly work to identifying a suspect to the point they can be cited, and the really vague, marginally workable calls are somewhat of a distraction to that. And that is a, the vast majority of these 185 calls are exactly that, virtually unworkable for the Police Department. It's important to highlight here that other cities in our area have similar challenges. So I said that San Bruno had 185 fireworks-related calls for service on the Fourth of July. Pacifica, which is the only other San Mateo County city that allows Safe and Safe fireworks use and sales, had 191. They conduct enforcement very similar to what we do in San Bruno, and their enforcement, like ours, is funded by the sale of Safe and Safe fireworks. But there are a number of cities that have big problems and do not have Safe and Safe fireworks. East Palo Alto populated the top of that list this year with 229 calls for service, notably more than in San Bruno. And then we have Daly City with 126, San Mateo with 119, and South San Francisco with 107. So you can see that even where fireworks, Safe and Safe fireworks are not legal, there's still a high volume of illegal fireworks being used on the Fourth of July, and those being reported to their local police departments. Again, important to note that none of those cities allow Safe and Safe fireworks, and none of them have a funding source for large-scale enforcement. As a result, they do not respond to fireworks-only complaints. As a result, they do not respond to fireworks-only complaints. If caller calls to say that they've got illegal fireworks going off in their neighborhood, the police's stance in most of those cities is to put that information out for units so that they can kind of be aware of the problem in the area, but they're not going to automatically dispatch units due to the limited resources and the high volume of calls. So these other cities have issues as well. Enforcement this year, it's important to remember that this is a $1,000 administrative citation that the police department is issuing, and this is a tool that was provided to the police department quite some time ago to be a greater deterrent. In years past, up until a few years back, we actually completed a misdemeanor arrest for violations of 12,677 of the Health and Safety Code, which makes it a misdemeanor to use or possess any amount of illegal fireworks. The challenge with those is that they end up going to the courts, and many of those individuals were paying $25, $30, $40 fines and walking out. And so it was not serving as much of a deterrent at all. The city has a municipal code that makes it illegal to use or possess those illegal fireworks, and it comes along with the $1,000 administrative citation for the first offense. And that served as a much better tool for us to create the penalty that we're looking for. It is also very important, once again, I know I sound like a bit of a broken record, but to understand that the sighting officer must directly observe a specific person committing a specific violation to issue this administrative citation. This is not negotiable. This is something that is in long-established case law and established by the penal code that for the officer to make an arrest for a crime at this level, that is, it must be committed directly in their presence, they have to directly observe the violation and be able to, with 100% certainty, identify the violator in order to issue a lawful citation. The next challenge is that we have to then safely detain the violator. And this may not seem like a big deal to most people, but if you, if you work in law enforcement, you can understand that the seriousness of this offense, being an administrative citation, essentially a code enforcement violation, coupled with the potential need to use force in order to effect detentions and issue citations, creates a precarious scenario for law enforcement. And so every year, we are faced with having to send officers out onto the street, asking them to be very proactive and very aggressive and hunting down these violators and issuing citations under those circumstances, while knowing that we really don't want them using any level of force to affect these detentions and issue these citations because the risk-reward simply is not there. And getting an officer hurt or hurting a member of the public or having a use-of-force incident that ends up ugly is simply not worth it for conducting this level of enforcement. Again, violators are cited, they're not physically arrested, and under no real circumstances, there are a few, but under no normal circumstances do they go to jail. Only evidence we see in plain view can be seized. This is also a problem where we may catch a person using illegal fireworks in the middle of the street, and take that illegal firework and issue them a citation, only to find that they have much more illegal fireworks in a backyard or in a garage or in a vehicle that they then come out and allow someone else to use later. So even when we're making these arrests or issuing these citations, it doesn't always mean that we're taking all of their ability away to continue violating throughout the evening, which has been a problem in the past. There's been a lot of questions about resident-provided video. The main question is, hey, if I record one of my neighbors shooting off illegal fireworks, can I call, report that to the police? Provide you with that video and you can issue them a citation. This is a very convoluted issue, and the short answer is no. Again, I fall back to this in-presence legal requirement that the person making the arrest needs to physically observe the violation. That being said, there are some areas we are looking into for next year to determine how that video surveillance might be able to be used. The challenge is that even if we can find the space to use it, we will have to make sure that from that video, the officer issuing the citation can make an absolute positive identification of the violator. And this is a bit of a misconception with video. Video is fantastic. We have video in a large volume of our crimes nowadays because of the proliferation of cameras, but the fact is that oftentimes a camera just shows an individual committing a crime. It doesn't tell the police department who that individual is with the level of certainty that's required in order to make an arrest or issue a citation. And this will certainly be a challenge with third-party video provided to the police department in an effort to spread out our resources and issue more citations year over year. We talked last year about the fact that if you're in control of a social gathering, you can be cited even if you're not the one who is lighting off illegal fireworks. This remains true, but the challenge is that at this point in time, the police department has to not only prove that the individual, control of the party, knew the illegal fireworks were going off, which is typically done by the first time we respond out, giving the homeowner or the person in control of the residence a verbal warning and documenting that warning, but we also have to prove responsibility in that they had the ability to stop the illegal fireworks from being used. And this came about last year after we issued a couple of these gathering citations that were not upheld in the appellate hearings. And so these are the two requirements that put some restrictions on us issuing those persons-in-control violation citations. Enforcement data for this year, you can see on the far left there for 2021, we issued 17 admin sites on the 4th of July, we made two physical arrests. The two physical arrests, one occurred because a subject who had multiple felony warrants did run from officers after committing an illegal fireworks violation. They gave foot pursuit for several blocks. So due to the warrants, that individual went to jail. The second arrest was because we had a level of intoxication in an individual such that they were not able to care for their own safety and they needed to be taken to a sobering facility. As you track back through the years, you can kind of see how this number lines up with previous years, and it's troubling to look at 2020 where obviously we are less than half the number of citations we issued last year. The first thing to note would be that last year was obviously the highest number of citations we had issued in a single year by almost two times, probably not sustainable year over year, especially because we had several citations dismissed last year. We needed to tighten up the burden of proof and what we were doing in terms of getting the evidence together to issue a citation. The second impact is fewer staff members. As I mentioned earlier, for fewer teams, this is a significant impact to enforcement operations. In addition, we had a slightly shorter peak window of the legal fireworks use this year, so the window of time in which we could issue citations effectively was a little bit shorter. And year over year, the violations are becoming more unobservable. So this would be the people who are lighting illegal fireworks in areas where the officers cannot conduct that direct observation they need in order to issue citations. I understand this can be incredibly frustrating for residents who are saying, the fireworks are going off over and over again out of my neighbor's backyard, but the fact of the matter remains that we have legal mandates as to where we can go in order to observe violations, secure evidence, and make arrests, especially for these low-level violations, and many times those are going to be almost unenforceable. Of the 17 people who were cited this year, 10 of them were San Bruno residents, the other seven were for, were people who live outside of our city. We seized about 66 pounds of live legal fireworks this year. This is about 12 pounds more than last year and 47 pounds over the annual average that we seized. We also seized about 50 pounds of spent fireworks. Those are really only collected when they're evidence of a crime. We don't go around and collect the spent fireworks around the streets. The street department takes care of that as part of their cleanup efforts on the 5th. Getting into costs, it is expensive to conduct the enforcement that we do on the 4th of July. Fortunately, as I've said before, these costs are covered by fees collected from safe and sane fireworks sales, but nonetheless, it is very expensive. So you can kind of work through the different costs here, but the city manager's office put together an educational mailer this year, sent it out to every resident in town. Police department put together a video public service announcement. We have additional staff on the 4th from community services, the fire marshal administrative and inspection hours to handle the booth inspections. 4th of July staffing and logistics increased for fire and police, pre- and post-4th of July education, enforcement, and logistics and cleanup costs. Obviously, the bulk of this expense is the 4th of July staffing and logistics for the police department at almost $30,000, about half of the $60,680 expense of our enforcement education operations surrounding the 4th of July. Every year, the police department conducts an annual debrief in an effort to learn lessons from that year's enforcement and safety campaign and to come up with new ideas for the next year. The debrief is actually a formal process that takes far longer than the few days that have passed since the 4th of July at this point, but I can tell you that we debrief immediately as well to come up with some things to talk about here. The first focus is to enhance what works well. As I mentioned earlier, we know that the use of undercover surveillance units is really about the most effective way to issue citations that stick and that people have to actually pay. There are some challenges with getting enough undercover vehicles and undercover officers to expand this, but we will be looking to expand it next year through a variety of different means. We also know that we need to conduct what we call by-bust operations throughout the year and not just in the days leading up to the 4th of July. The reality is that illegal fireworks are making their way in for next 4th of July as we speak, and if we're not active at the investigative level and attempting to intervene in those sales and to try to take down the larger-scale supply operations, which will require working with other jurisdictions such as the San Francisco Police Department, then we really don't do a very good job of seizing a lot of illegal fireworks before they end up in the hands of end-users. Similar to fighting a drug problem, this is going to be more effective than just dealing with the line-level user, and so we know that we need to expand those operations. We also need to increase our use of data to direct resources. As I mentioned, we did that this year with live, real-time data during the event, and we will expand that into next year. We need to reduce or eliminate what is ineffective, and I already mentioned it, but it's these responses to calls without the critical information to really be enforceable or enable officers to take action. When you have, you know, 160 calls per service and some 24 sworn officers working in detail, it's pretty, and it's all happening in a two-and-a-half to three-hour window of time, you can simply do the math and see that we're talking about more than a call a minute. And to handle that one call per minute is dispatching officers constantly, continuously, before they can even get to a call, they're being dispatched to the next call, and it's not an effective way to conduct enforcement. This is not a new concept, by the way. You can date back all the way to Sir Peel and his founding of the tenets of modern law enforcement in the late 1800s, which made it very clear that the only way we get compliance with the law is through voluntary cooperation of the community. Ultimately, it's not going to be enforcement that solves the problems with rampant illegal fireworks use, it's going to have to be a better behaving community. We'll also be considering other enhancements. One particular enhancement we're really looking at a great deal is what we're calling streamlined ID and site later procedures. Right now, if an officer makes a arrest for an illegal fireworks violation on the 4th of July, like we already mentioned that they need to go through the process, it'll be, you know, 10, 15, 20 minutes to conduct the observation, get in close enough, safely detain the person, then they've got to ID the individual, process evidence, take booking photos, and then take the evidence over for safe disposal because oftentimes these things are considered to be explosive or dangerous devices. All in all, it's about 45 minutes to an hour for one site and release. So again, if you do the math, and you've got hundreds and hundreds of people using illegal fireworks on the 4th of July and a handful of officers conducting enforcement, even if they are ultra diligent, if all that major violating is occurring in a three-hour window, the average team can issue three to four citations during that period of time. That is not going to be enough to really dent the illegal fireworks use that goes on every 4th of July. So we're looking at a streamlined ID and site later procedure, which would involve simply moving in to identify the violator, moving on from there and issuing a citation at a later date via the mail in order to eliminate the evidence processing, booking, and identification processes that take so much time. There are a number of challenges there because the evidence can be very important to the case and to the sites being upheld, but I think that we can probably work around some of those things and get to a happy medium where we can expedite our sighting procedures and enable us to take on more enforcement on the 4th. Additionally, we are talking, as I mentioned earlier, about the use of third-party video evidence. There will be a lot of work involved there in the next 12 months, but I think that we'll get to a point where we can at least make some use of all of the good residents in town that are trying to do their best to help us. And finally, use of the unmanned aircraft system and drone. That, that would have occurred this year, except that COVID kind of created some setbacks in deployment of our UAS drone program. That program will be up and running certainly by next 4th of July. It doesn't necessarily mean that enforcement becomes particularly easier using those devices, but it does enable us to conduct more widespread observation and to hone officers into where they need to be more quickly. So with that, I will turn it over to Chief Delay to talk about the fire side of the 4th of July safety operations.
Ari, we are not hearing you.
Ari, if you want me to take these slides, just let me know. I don't know if you're going to be able to solve this issue, are you, or not? No volume, sir. Can you hear me? You got me? Yep, great. Sorry about that. I'm not sure what was going on there, but we're here. Good evening, Honorable Mayor Member of the Council, Ari Delay, your Fire Chief. Thank you again for having us this evening to provide a brief synopsis of the 4th of July operations for the San Bruno Police Department and the San Bruno Fire Department. If I can get the next slide, please. For the 4th of July celebration and the day itself, the San Bruno Fire Department staffed, in addition to its normal day-to-day staffing, which is two engines and one truck company, we staffed an additional ALS engine company to help best protect the city. In addition, we had all of our fire prevention staff on duty for the day, and myself as your Fire Chief was there for the entire event, again with Chief Johansson as well. If I could have the next slide, please. Calls for service. We handled approximately 19 calls for service on the 4th of July, and that was for the entire day, so a fairly light day for us, honestly, all things considered. And again, as Johansson alluded to, our peak activity period for the fire department was approximately 9:00 to 11:30 in the evening was when we saw the majority of our calls for service. 32% of the calls for service for the fire department were fireworks-related. And if I could have the next slide, please. And as you can see, this is just a breakdown of calls for service that the fire department responded to leading up to the 4th of July, and the 4th of July itself, and the preceding days. So fairly light as far as actual fire calls. The 4th of July celebration was, again, it was light for calls for service for fire-related calls, but the overall volume of fireworks, both legal and illegal, was fairly heavy this year as years in the past. If I could have the next slide, please. A couple of our observations, the illegal fireworks was heavy this year as it has been in the past. Our prevention and early detection efforts were critical in trying to prevent a lot of those things from happening. And then I'd just like to make a special note and thanks to our Public Works and Parks Department for their efforts leading up to the 4th of July and their, the re-debate and fire prevention efforts prior to the 4th, and also the Parks Department for their, you know, their work on that same re-debatement with their contractors and their crews, and also the hard work that was done after the 4th of July event because there's quite a bit of cleanup that has to take place every year after the event itself. And one thing I just wanted to really point out, we had, Pacifica I know had an injury, a couple of injuries to civilians, and we did have one significant injury, and this particular injury was due to illegal fireworks. Not the safe and sane kind where we, you know, there are less dangers, but illegal fireworks, and the important piece to note here is some of these illegal fireworks are sold to people and they get their hands on them, and they're not really built in the same way that a normal firework is from a safe and sane perspective. They have some what's called fast fuses, and these, these fuses, they might seem four or five inches long, but they literally go off in a half a second, and these fireworks can explode and cause a lot of significant injuries, and that happened during the 4th of July here in the city of San Bruno, and it's been quite some time, I think, since we've had a significant injury from fireworks. And this particular one, just important to note, is from illegal fireworks, and I really, really wanted to stress the point that they are super dangerous and they're, you know, some of those large, larger-type fireworks are called professional fireworks displays, and they get in the hands of civilians, and they're not really made for our use, and they're not really designed that way. So if I could just have the next slide, please. And with that, that concludes our presentation from Chief Johansson and myself, and we're happy to answer any questions you may have.
And thank you both chiefs for your report, and thank you to all the city staff that you highlighted for, that assisted up to the 4th and thereafter. So comments or questions from my colleagues? Councilmember Salazar.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to thank both of the chiefs and their staff for all the work. A few of us were poking around there that night and really got to see firsthand how busy everybody was and how dedicated and how upbeat everybody was, even though they were working on a, on a holiday. So definitely appreciate all that, all that extra work. I did have one question, going back to the trend we saw on Slide 8, and I was wondering, Chief Johansson, if there was anything significant that happened between '16 and '17 that increased the number of citations, and was that because of the volume of infractions, or was it due to an increase in enforcement?
Yes, councilmember, that, that's actually a really good question. In that particular year is when we finally started to kind of learn we needed we needed to streamline the citation process. So we used to deploy units and just kind of send them out to the street and say, hey, go try to find illegal fireworks and do the best you can. And we were still doing arrests at that point in time, not issuing administrative citations. And so what we did is we streamlined that process and created basically an assembly processing line at the Police Department where officers arrested the subject, put him in handcuffs, put him in the car, brought him to the station and passed them off to group that would handle the booking and the evidence and the photos while the team was able to go back out on the street and conduct enforcement once again. And so we started to kind of see this new efficiency, whereas in a typical year, honestly, a team might do one citation or, I'm sorry, one arrest when we were doing the 12, 677 arrests and it went to them doing, you know, two or three or four per team and got us moving a little bit better.
Great. All right. Thanks for that clarification and thanks again for all the work.
Thank you.
Councilmember Mason.
Thank you for a great presentation. This is for, for police. I just wanted to ask, there was a comment made by the chief earlier about some of the citations from last year being dismissed. And I was just wondering, you know, I guess what caused it? And maybe if you can give an example? Thank you.
Yeah, a good question as well. Thank you. So the citations, they're administrative citations. So the first step in an appeal process is that they have a hearing with a hearing officer, an impartial hearing officer that's appointed by the city to sit through and hear their evidence and hear the officer's evidence. And really, there's no single reason why a case, you know, gets upheld or dismissed. To be honest, at the end of the day, it's up to that hearing officer. I've seen citations dismissed because someone shows up and says they can't afford to pay them. However, I've also seen citations dismissed because the hearing officer didn't feel that the burden of proof was met. Last year, we saw that with a couple of these citations issued to homeowners, where the hearing officer just didn't feel that we had enough proof that the homeowner could have or should have stopped the illegal fireworks usage and they were hesitant to hit them with a $1,000 fine. Still, over the years, rarely, but I have seen citations dismissed because the officers didn't do a thorough enough job of writing a good report or the officer was sick and couldn't show up to testify at a hearing. So there's a litany of different reasons why they might be dismissed. But quite frankly, in my experience, and I've been handling those hearings for the Police Department as the oversight for five years now, very, very few are dismissed. Last year was the first time I saw more than one or two. And I think it really was because the hearing officer wasn't as comfortable as we were operationally with these homeowner citations. And some of that is just educating the hearing officer that, you know, this is what the municipal code says and it's pretty sound. And some of it is about making the officers do what they need to for those tickets to be upheld.
Great. Thank you.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Thank you. I just want to echo my colleagues' thanks for, for the whole San Bruno team and working on the holiday and all this hard work. So I just want to confirm that 60,000 in cost, that was 100% covered by the Safe and Same fireworks sales. Is that correct?
That is my understanding, yes, that the cost of the operation is covered by that 8% tax that gets levied for the sales of Safe and Same fireworks.
Great. Thank you. So I was curious about, you touched on it briefly about the other enhancements, the use of third party video evidence. And we, we talk about this a lot year after year and you mentioned it in your presentation now, how, you know, residents are trying to help, say, look, I got them here on video, but that's not usable. So are we thinking that there's going to be some changes in the, in the law? Or how, what do we, what do we think can be done with that going forward?
So this is an interesting area of law that, in my opinion, is not actually clearly articulated in established case law. Video evidence, while not new to any of us, is actually fairly new to the criminal justice system. And the question that looms there is, can it count as direct observation if that observation is conducted of video and not of the actual violation? And if so, in what timeframe would it be contemporaneous enough to be a continuation of the offense and to qualify for the direct observation? The challenge here is that, thinking more globally about the good of communities in law enforcement, I don't think we want the first case evaluated for that case law question to involve something like illegal fireworks enforcement. I think it will be something taken into account by a court that says, wow, you know, I just really don't think we want to open that door for police to be issuing citations based on something they see on video. And so it's more a matter of looking into it in depth, working with the city attorney, who I see is pictured in, so he may have more to add here as the expert than I do. But it's about working with that video and determining at what point is it usable? And is there a mechanism? So for example, the misdemeanor requirement is circumvented with warrants. So if we have a misdemeanor not committed in our presence, but we want the individual ultimately be held accountable for it, we simply can't arrest them on the spot. We submit a case to the district attorney and if the judge feels that there's enough there, they'll issue a warrant for the arrest. But here, we're dealing with the municipal code violation for which that's not really a feasible mechanism that the court would appreciate. So it's just trying to figure out where's the happy medium and what evidence can we take from the community and put to good use to be better at enforcement? City Attorney, did you have something to add to that?
Only, only a very brief point about the use of video evidence that you didn't touch on, which is that in order for that video evidence normally to get missable in court, it has to be authenticated. And in order to be authenticated, the person who took the video has to say, that was me. I took the video. And so then the city is relying on a sort of third party who really has very little connection with the city, except they were there taking a video to show up at scheduled appeal hearings and show up in court and so on and so forth, which may not be what they signed up for, right? They just took a video and are turning it over to the Police Department. This is very similar to somebody reporting a code enforcement violation of any sort of garden variety kind. That's why staff has to go out and in order to write a citation, has to verify that the violation exists. They can't just take somebody else's word for it.
Great. Thank you very much.
City Manager, did you want to follow up on Councilmember Hamilton on the cost recovery?
Exactly. Thank you, Mayor Medina. Javon Groban, City Manager, I just wanted to follow up. Councilmember Hamilton asked, has that $60,000 been reimbursed? The answer is not yet. The fireworks vendors have until September 30th to file paperwork with the city demonstrating their full gross receipts revenue. And then the city will, will send an invoice to each of the vendor for their pro-rata share of that 60,000. The Police Chief did mention a 8% tax. I just want to clarify that the city does not have a 8% tax. There were some fire booth vendors that added a 8% or some percent fee on top of the transaction. That is their choice, but we do not have a set percentage tax. What our municipal code says is that the active fireworks vendors are responsible for their pro-rata share of the city's costs related to fireworks and that's at full $60,000. Just wanted to provide that clarification.
Thank you for clarifying that. I wasn't implying that we have the cash in hand yet, but that we were going to end up being square for it from the vendors eventually and we will. So thank you.
Vice Mayor Medina.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Medina, Mayor Medina. I wanted to thank staff, that's everyone, just like my other colleagues, police, fire, parks and public works. To be away from your family on Independence Day is tough. And I was fortunate enough to be able to be at the briefing along with the mayor and Councilman Salazar and then to go along with, a ride along for a little bit to kind of see and witness for myself how difficult it is. And then I was able to go home and participate in the fun part of Safe and Same fireworks. In our neighborhood, we were able to enjoy lighting the Safe and Same ones and then were able to go home and, while all the illegal ones were going off for quite a bit of the night. And acknowledging that as we were driving through, our San Bruno residents were, were, were basically, the majority of them were following the rules, following the law, waving as a police officer went by and thumbs up. And I think they were happy to see that, that the police had a presence. And I just wanted to acknowledge that sacrifice. The illegal fireworks are something that are all over. Everything that was being lit prior to the fireworks sales were illegal. And, and that's really important to keep in mind. And I look forward to the change in technology use that will be implemented next year to improve the chances of catching those that are, that are using illegal ones. And hopefully, I don't think they'll ever go away because people just are going to decide to break the law, whether it's speeding, whether it's running a red light or doing a California stop at a stop sign. People make poor choices and sometimes people get hurt by it. And those fireworks are really, really annoying and damaging to some people in our community. And unfortunately, some people just don't care. So, so thanks to all staff for their efforts. And I'm glad there was only one injury. It's a serious problem, so hopefully people are going to learn by it. Thank you.
Councilmember Mason, you have your hand up again and then we'll go to you and then I will finish up with my final comments on the topic.
Great. Thank you. I vaguely recall last year's presentation and I, a hearing tonight around the comments around the camera footage. I, forgive me if I'm wrong, but this is just some recollection that last year there was a, you know, recommendation or almost to be a safe, you know, people who are using illegal fireworks as long as it's, you know, safe to do so. And based on what I just heard now, it sounds like it is really quite difficult to use that video footage. So I'm just curious to know what the recommendation would be now given two years in, in the position that you're in, Chief?
Yeah, it's a difficult space, right? So I think part of what you're referring to is that last year there was a high level of interest from the more proactive elements in our community, who, by the way, we are eternally grateful for and is one of the things that makes San Bruno a unique place to live, work and play, that they wanted to chip in and said, look, we know that you can't be everywhere at once. So what do you want us to do when we see something? And first was to give them a measure of caution, right? Safety always has to be the first thing and as we've found in many years, had to learn the hard way. When you introduce a high volume of alcohol into these celebrations and illegal fireworks, oftentimes people act very irrationally. And the last thing we want to be responding to is a good Samaritan trying to help the Police Department that ends up in a physical altercation with a neighbor or someone from out of the community that's come in to use illegal fireworks. And so we were trying to give a measure of caution there. I would say that, as I mentioned earlier and as the city attorney touched on, you're absolutely right, the usability of that to actually just flat out issue a citation, it's really not there at this point in time. It doesn't mean, however, that that video is of no value. When paired together with a citation where, you know, sometimes these citations operate in that gray area where an officer is a half block away and they see someone in the dark go over and lean down and lighting a legal firework in the middle of the street and they move in quickly and that person has moved over to the sidewalk and is now in a little bit of a crowd. But the officer is sure enough that they have the right person to issue a citation. Well, if we couple that with a neighbor that says, hey, the cops were out here and I was shooting video, now we have some added evidence that can be of value to the officer as long as the citizen or the resident was able to get that video without putting themselves in harm's way. It also can help to direct us in. So if you call to report a violation and you know who the person is and you're able to show that to the officer, we can circulate that out to these plainclothes and undercover units who can then sort of target that individual in their surveillance and come in and try to conduct the observations needed to actually get the citation issued in a way that's a lot more effective than just coming in blind to a large crowd and trying to see who's shooting them off. So even if it can't be used as the direct evidence or as the sole evidence to issue a citation, it is still valuable if obtained safely by the resident.
For myself.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. For myself, as was indicated, Councilmember Salazar and Vice Mayor Medina and I did do a ride along. They let us sit in the front, not in the back. And we went in separate vehicles so we could touch each beat that was in town from a different perspective. I also just on my, you know, Daly City had a council meeting last night and they were talking about the illegal fireworks. Keep in mind, they do not have Safe and Same. One council member said as of Sunday, he was still hearing the booms. The mayor there thought about putting a committee together. They felt it was worse. I put out a before the 4th, the day before then, the day of the 4th and the day after the 4th, the Pacific mayor and I talked on each of those occasions just to get an idea of how it was going in, that our city versus their city in regards to being the only two in the county with Safe and Same fireworks. I also sent out a survey to probably about a dozen mayors within the county of San Mateo, just to ask them some simple questions about, do they have additional staffing on the 4th from police, yes or no, fire, yes or no? Did they think it was worse than, equal to, or less than, for illegal, because they don't have Safe and Same from 2020 versus 2021? How they administer any fines or assessments and then any additional comment? So those are coming in, but there's, and again, it's an opinion of one, but there is a mayor further down the field, it was worse in, in his community than it was last year. Still getting some of that data in is again, the data that we received tonight. So again, to echo my colleagues, I wanted to thank all staff. I've been this for quite a few years, been at the briefing and the ride along. It's not an easy task and it's not an easy job. And it obviously is taking away from one's friends, family and other areas that one may wish to focus on, but cannot thank enough and remind our residents that this money is, are recouped from the booths that sell the fireworks to those folks. There are communities that don't have that resource and therefore they're at regular staffing, even with the additional calls that was indicated by the Police Chief. So again, thank you both for your report. Thank you to the staff and the team. And I guess what I could say is I guess we'll see you next year. So thank you to both. Why don't we go ahead and if there is nothing else, I think I'm frozen. Okay, I'm not. Okay. So with that, we'll end our presentations. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Let's move on to item five, consent calendar. All items are considered routine or implemented by an earlier council action. It may be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion unless requested. We have items A through E. There are five items. Is there anyone that wants a separate vote on an item to be pulled? Not seeing any? Thank you. Is there any that we would like to have a further question or comment on? Items A through E. Councilmember Mason.
E, please.
E, got it. Anything else, colleagues? All right, I'm seeing E only for additional thought or comment. And that is, E is adopt a resolution authorizing use of American Rescue Act funds to support the San Bruno small business that qualify for the Bay Area Entrepreneur Center micro grant program in the amount, not the $112,000. And I'll permit it.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask how the program's going because we've provided previous grants before. And I just wanted to hear from the Entrepreneur Center how this is being accepted by the small businesses? Any feedback that you could give us and how you feel that the recovery at this point is going? Thank you.
City Manager, is there anything that you can? Well, you're sharing a screen, so I guess that, yes. Okay. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Member of the Council on the Public. In response to Councilmember Mason's question, can I ask the city clerk to bring in Sayida Stroud, the Executive Director for the Bay Area Entrepreneurship Center, to respond in part to Councilmember Mason's question? Just really quickly, I just pulled up one slide to provide a little context for the viewing public. I know the city council knows this because we talked about this a bunch of times. But the recommended action is on the screen and it's exactly what the mayor just read. There is a grant program that is being administered by the Bay Area Entrepreneurship Center. They had a 2020 grant cycle where they were able to award 16 businesses a grant of $4,000. That was from funds provided by the San Bruno Community Foundation, not the city. They then administer a 2021 cycle with, with funds, again, provided by the San Bruno Community Foundation. And they have been able to, they have funding to. And they have been able to, they have funding to award these 16 original businesses and additional $3,000 to have a total of $7,000. But they received 31 applications from the 2021 cycle. And they, they have enough funds to award 15 businesses and additional, 15 new businesses, $7,000. But that leaves 16 businesses that they're unable to provide a grant award for due to lack of funds. And so there was a request by the Bay Area Entrepreneurship Center and we were able to incorporate funding within the budget of the 112,000 to fund those additional 16 businesses. And so the action that is before you tonight is to authorize the, the city manager to pay the invoice to the Bay Area Entrepreneurship Center so they can give the 16 grants to the individual businesses. And so that's why this item is before you at, at level. It requires a city council budget authorization as well as authorization to execute and pay the invoice. So that, that's the background. And if Sayida Stroud is on screen, I will stop the screen share and she can answer any additional questions.
And I am here, thank you so much, City Manager Grogan. And can you hear me okay?
Yes, perfect.
Okay, awesome. Just wanted to quickly thank the city council and Mayor Medina for having a quick opportunity to shed just a little bit of light on this program, for the support and to talk a little bit about the response that we've received from our businesses. So thank you, City Manager Grogan, for that context. I think it's, my hope is that answered some questions that were out there around what this grant is about and how it was originally funded. In response to Councilwoman Mason's question about how this grant has been received by the local businesses, I, I believe, just from the, the feedback I've received from the community, that this has been very good and positive for our local businesses. And any, you know, given the last year's challenges, they've been so diverse, because our businesses are so diverse, any, any little bit of help has been impactful, probably more than I realized when we set out to launch this program last year. So with this second round, I'm just beyond excited and grateful that all of the businesses, not all that applied, because they all weren't eligible, but of those eligible businesses, we're able to support them all. And it's because of the city of San Bruno and the support that, that you all are giving. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Sayida. Thank you for being here this evening and waiting to bring that up to us. Thank you. Are there any questions from colleagues? If not, that would then, I don't see any members of the public on consent. So any action from council for consent, items A through E?
To approve. Second.
Uh, motion second to approve all of consent. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Mason?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Marty Medina?
Aye.
Mayor Recomendino?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We'll move on now to item number six, conductive business. City clerk?
Item six, A, receive oral, oral report on the storm drainage and flood protection fee election and provide direction to staff regarding next step.
City manager?
Backed in by popular demand. Javon Grogan, City Manager, I will provide a brief presentation to the city council with regard to our storm drainage and flood protection fee election and next steps. The city council and the community will remember that on June 22 of this year, the city council took an action where you adopted a resolution declaring the results of the election that closed on June 15 of this year for the mail-in election connected to the proposed storm drainage and flood protection fee and abandoning proceedings because the measure did not pass. At that meeting, the city council had some discussions about what the next steps would be and I committed to coming back to you in an expeditious fashion to have that conversation. And so that's why we're here to listen a month later. So let's try to work through our technical issues that we have seemed to be having all night. Okay. Objective, to receive an oral report, as the city clerk said, with regard to the fee and provide direction to staff. Our agenda tonight really has four items. One is acknowledgement and thank you. We'll overview the initiative, we'll talk about the election results and then we'll get on to the core part of the discussion, which is options and next steps moving forward. Thank you simply. But we really just want to take this moment to thank the San Bruno community for engaging with us on this process. A, a process that was a year and a half effort to articulate and educate the community of our stormwater challenges and the fact that the current fees have been in place for nearly 30 years, 27 years to be in effect and are no longer covering their costs. And we had a robust public communication effort and outreach effort and that, that the entire process really culminated with following the state prescribed, what we commonly refer to as a proposition to a hen process for mail-in ballots. And so it was a process that was, that the city of San Bruno and, and many, many of our residents were unused to because it was not like a typical registered voter election. It was a required mail-in ballot property owners. And so we, we eventually mailed out over 12,500 ballots and received back 5,226 ballots. You may be saying, well, that's not, not a lot, but it's actually 42% for these off-cycle mail-in ballot elections is, is par. And so it's around what we expected, 40%. And we, we also confirmed with our consultant, Will Dan, that ran the election, is that for a response rate of 40% for a mail-in ballot off-cycle only to property owners is a, is about right. And so as a part of our robust outreach, the council knows that we met with community groups and went on a bit of a road show. So a little bit of the initiative, it was a part of, it is a part of the city's overall comprehensive fiscal sustainability project. As we own the city of, of San Bruno, have been improving its fiscal footing. And this effort is critically important to that financial footing, as we'll see in a slide or two. But our fiscal sustainability project really has a couple key components underpinning it. It is expenditure reductions, growing our revenue, pursuing economic development and prudent budget management. And I won't go through the, the lineage of accomplishments that we've had with that because we've, we've had sort of long presentations of that. But this effort was critical to that. And it was critical to that because our storm water system is aging. Many of our pipes are over 100 years old. And just in the last 24 months, we've spent over 1.2 million dollars on infrastructure that has failed, that we had a liability to protect. The most significant one cost nearly a million dollars itself. And that's when we had a storm called Colbert that eventually eroded a part of the hillside near San Bruno Avenue across from the Lornardi's grocery store and threatened the integrity of San Bruno Avenue. So we had to declare an emergency and respond quickly to that. And so we know the importance of maintaining our infrastructure. And the city undertook an effort back in, in 2017 to do a stormwater master plan that identified more than $30 million of improvements and we have yet to be able to embark on those improvements. And we know every year that passes, when we don't make those improvements, the infrastructure gets worse and the cost to eventually make those improvements is greater. And so we, we launched this effort back in September 2020. We, we followed the mail-in ballot procedures that began in, in March of 21 and then the election ended in June of 2015. This slide is sadly all too familiar to the city council because we've had a lot of discussions about this slide during our budget conversations and it's the precipitive, precipitous decline of our stormwater enterprise fund. Now that, essentially for funding, we, we, we continue to be at the status quo, which is the revenue does not cover operating nor to cover the, the $30 million of needed capital improvements. And so the general fund has to become backstop. And we know that that will, will come at the cost of services and programs. And so the city council did identify funding for the $1 million deficit in the current budget year, using the one-time revenue from the federal government in our ARPA funds. However, we, we have to fix this problem. And so what's shown in this graphic, the fund balance in blue was mildly positive last fiscal year and projected to, to negative if, if the status quo continues, which is the fees are set at a 1994 level. And so the other chart is from our, our budget process as well, that shows the proposed budget that had a beginning fund balance of 312,000. This municipal or Prop 218 election ended right in the, the middle of our council deliberations. And so this, this is not the adopted budget, but this is the budget where we had a $1 million deficit. And again, the current revenue, as you can see, is just over $659,000, 1994 figures, where the, most of the properties in the city of San Bruno paid $46 a year to fund the stormwater enterprise. But our operating costs alone are 1.5 million. And so that leaves a deficit of 875,000. And our capital costs this year alone was 476,000. And that's frankly only because we, we can't afford to do the needed work. And a large majority of that was for our required grant match because we did receive a, a grant to do work on our storm water system in Spyglass. But that grant comes with a requirement to, to pay 10%. And so we had to identify local funds to do that. So what remains unfunded are our collection boxes, various improvements throughout the city. We have a regional stormwater capture project that is near the Caltrans driveway at I-280 and I-380 and trash capture devices throughout the city to stop trash from entering into our stormwater system and then eventually being populated into the bay. And so the election results are, are shown. The election concluded at 5:00 PM on June 15th. The ballots, a pub counting of the ballots began in this room the very next day on June 16th. And that was available online for remote viewing and in-person attendance. We did have members of the public come and watch the ballot counting as well as we livestreamed the ballot counting on Zoom all day. And so the results are as shown, 1,833 yes votes, 3,310 no votes, 83 ballots were rejected. And so I won't go through all the data, but we did want to provide for the public and the council and the reasons for why some ballots were rejected, some were missing a signature, others the yes or no was not marked clearly. And we had a few duplicate, duplicate tip ballots. And approximately 220 were returned to sender back to the city from, from the post office. And so what are our next steps is the core question that the city council and, and certainly we know that the public wants. And so we know that continuing the status quo is not acceptable. And what that means is that our system will continue to flood during heavy rains and cause property damage and risk public safety. We understand and we recognize that property owners did, did not wish to say yes to the measure and, and pay the additional cost. But we also know that both property owners and residents want their, want, expect and deserve to have their public infrastructure maintained. And we are committed to continuing to find a solution and absolutely council is. And so frankly, we're, we're committed to redouble our efforts. And this was a strategic initiative. It is a strategic initiative. It is not closed out and we, we shall continue. As far as options, wanted to articulate five, and we have a six other there because there, there are certainly others that can be considered. But the, the options that we wanted to talk to the city council about are on the screen and we'll go through them now. First off is to initiate an analysis of the election results. And this would entail working with Will Dan, who counted the ballots for us and engaged with them to conduct a demographic analysis of the ballot responses. We really want to seek information on are there patterns of how property, properties voted by type, are there patterns by neighborhood or if the assessment amount can provide us some sort of fact-based information on trends. And, and really we want to do this and, and look to identify funding for this because we would need to work with the city council to have approval for funding if this effort's currently not funded. And we would align any future poll or survey to one of the future efforts as discussed in, in the other four options. And so option two is to return to the voters with a further or additional articulation of the need. I think the, well, we can engage on a second Prop 218 process with the results of the election coming out as they were, nearly two to one, not in favor, not sure that additional articulation would be helpful. Certainly we can seek to do a, a more robust job at articulating the need. It is also important to note that the city is barred from campaigning or asking members of the public to vote yes. We can only articulate the need and provide fact, fact-based information. But one option that is certainly available to the city is to sort of, we do the, the public education effort and relaunch the state 218 process again. The, a third option is consider a general obligation bond or a parcel tax. This effort would be focused primarily on funding the master plan projects, that is that 30-plus million dollar worth of projects that was identified on the city's 2017 master plan. And essentially what this would do is that it would bifurcate the problem and attempt to solve a portion of it. The, the storm drainage and flood protection fee was aimed at solving, if you will, the complete issue, both the issue to have enough funds to cover the operation, the maintenance of the system and also recovering enough funds to complete the, the needed projects so that we can, over time, do that $30 million worth of projects. If we undertake a general obligation bond or a parcel tax, we can really focus in on simply doing the projects and look for other ways to fund the operating costs. And if we look toward funding the projects, the bonds will automatically have a sunset date when they are repaid and that may address some concerns that we heard from property owners. In addition, a general obligation bond and a parcel or a parcel tax will be a election in a different venue. It will be a registered voter election. And timing that on election cycles that have a high turnout may also be something that the city council wants to consider. Whereas the storm drain and flood protection fee by, by law was only limited to property owners, not limited, not, not registered voters. Option four is consider a special stormwater approved tax initiative. This could likely be timed for the November 22 or November 24 election. We could do a special election, but as we saw with the update that we received at earlier tonight's meeting, a special election, the cost is approximately a half a million dollars, so 500,000. So we'd likely want to time any voter approved initiative So, we'd likely want to time any voter-approved initiative, whether in option three or option four, to when there is a regularly scheduled election. That will require a two-thirds approval, as will number three, depending on how it's structured. But that is an option is to go for a tax measure. The fifth option is to participate in a possible future regional effort. As I know the city council knows, there have been a new countywide flood control and sea level rise resiliency agency that has been established. And there are conversations about having a countywide measure to look at stormwater and other items. Since the June 15 date, we have received inquiries from the county and other cities, because we are not alone in having a challenge with funding our stormwater system. And so, there may be, in the future, a region-wide effort to look at stormwater. The challenge with region-wide efforts and our other regional revenue sources, typically, they are structured as the revenue from the county is pooled together and given in strategic grants for specific projects. And so, we may not be able to look toward a regional effort to fund the full complement of our infrastructure. Because with typical regional revenue measures, a city does not receive the money that's collected in their jurisdiction. Those funds are then pooled and given for strategic grants. And six of other, we may very well identify other efforts. And we didn't want to close off any possibilities for that or present the five that we've talked about as the only options. And so, as far as the staff recommendation, we really are recommending three, which is to proceed with the analysis of the prior election effort, forestall any poll or survey, and align that to a subsequent effort. And the one that we would be recommending is to begin looking into, not to commit, but begin looking into a general obligation bond or a parcel tax and really focus that initiative on accomplishing the capital improvement projects, those projects that we know about, those projects that have been identified because the infrastructure is aging and in need of replacement. And the longer we wait to do them, the more expensive they become. That if aligned with a bond or aligned to those projects, would have a sunset. And then, the fifth item, which is to continue to have conversations with the county and other agencies within the county. And if there is an effort for a regional-wide stormwater project, to certainly participate in that, because we have one region-wide project now. And that's our stormwater capture project near I-380 and I-280. It is within the city of San Bruno, but will benefit the region because it is a groundwater injection project and will reduce the flow that goes into the bay. And so, that concludes the presentation and our recommendations. And open for any questions and discussions the city council may have. I will take this slide down for now. But if council would like me to call it back up, we're happy to do so.
Thank you. We received the oral report on the Storm Grainage. Staff is looking for us to provide direction regarding next steps. So, now is the time for your comments and questions for next steps, please. Colleagues? Councilor Mason?
Yeah, thank you for that report. And there was a slide that I did not see that was also requested, which was the top 20 landowners in San Bruno and how they voted. I was just wondering if we would be getting that at a different time?
Sure, Councilmember Mason. Yes, at the prior meeting on June 22, you did ask that should the city conduct analysis that we look at the largest property owners and have they voted? At this point, the city, in the last three weeks, have not embarked on that effort. We can look at that through the demographic analysis and look at the type, when we say look at the type of property owners in that first bullet under number one. Size is one of the factors that we will look into, and that can also be attained through the assessment amount data. But that work needs to be conducted and funded. But in the last three weeks, we have not begun that work, and that is one of the recommendations to begin that work.
Okay, and I mean, how much time, I guess, would it take? Because I would imagine that the, between the 1833 votes yes and 3310 votes no, or is there, there must have been a reporting mechanism? I mean, how is that all kept? How that stored?
Councilmember Mason, all the ballots are stored. City staff have not gone through the ballots to identify who voted and how they voted. Ballots were counted in this room with members of the public and members of the public vote present and at home. All 5,000-plus ballots that were received were gone through and sorted in yes or no. In order to undertake the analysis to see any demographic trends, we really need to embark on that work, and we have not done that. At this point, we do not have a scope of work for the vendor that we would love to do that, nor do I know how much that work would cost. What I am bringing forward to the city council here at your request is a recommendations and a plan for next steps. That is one of the next steps. And should the city council agree to embark on that analysis, we will certainly do that and work to obtain a full scope of work and a timetable. And the last three weeks, that work has not been done, it's not funded. We are simply having the conversation to talk about next steps right now.
Okay, so I don't want to belabor the point, but I just, I don't know why we need a consultant to identify the top 20 landowners and how they voted. But I would just leave it at that. It should be fairly easy to identify that information without demographics. We don't need to know information. But we were told that it was public record, so who are they and how did they vote? I wanted to ask also around, I think that there's questions that have been kind of not like clearly, not maybe clearly communicated around the public and how the public's reaction has been around the stormwater. And so, you know, the areas that I have largely heard have been around why such a significant increase? And could it be phased in in higher quantities within more of like a five-year phase in, five-year, 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 et cetera? Why there were no exemptions for seniors who are on fixed income, of which San Bruno has a number of, a pretty large number of seniors? Why there was no sunset? More honesty around the messaging and some of the pictures, I guess. I have been told that were in the flyers. And you know, whether, you know, these were areas that could have been maintained better as opposed to making, you know, saying that it's an emergency. It is an emergency, but how long had the city known about some of these areas? And then, I think the other area that is really kind of difficult as a council member to respond to is why the city is prioritizing requesting these funds of the residents when we still haven't initiated the short-term rentals, the charter city transfer tax for commercial buildings, and the cannabis tax. And so, I say this only because, again, I don't know what a consultant costs. I don't know if that's part of what we're approving tonight. It's not exactly clear. But what I do want to say is I think these are very common, and these are what I have been told a number of times. And I think unless we're able to come up with responses that are diligent, that are honest, it's going to be difficult to overcome the amount of no's that we got. And this isn't a city that has traditionally supported the measures that the city of San Bruno has brought forth to them. So, I do just want to state that I appreciate all the work staff did. I know that we saved a lot of money on consultants in moving this forward. But I do want to take a step back and just be very clear that I don't think it's a big surprise what the areas of concern were. And I think we've got to be honest with ourselves about that and figure out how do we address them and move forward. Thank you.
Next would be Vice Mayor Medina.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Medina. And thank you, staff, for this report. For me, giving some data analysis is first. And it's my understanding what our city manager is requesting for us to proceed with him to return back with that scope that would detail the costs associated to do that study. So, I'm in favor of hearing what that cost would be. And until we get the cost, it's kind of hard to move off of that point. I think there was a bunch of uncertainty in this election, and COVID made it much more difficult. And I'm hoping that at some point, our residents, we need our residents to get behind this. We can't continue operating with hundreds of thousands of dollars that are going to be coming out of our general fund. And our infrastructure continues to age. We're a 100-year city. The backbone of our stormwater system is old, and we need to fix it. And if we don't have the funds to fix it, then we're going to have to take that out of our general fund. Our city manager calls it a backstop, and it's a different way of wording it. But the money has to come out of somewhere. And so, to get to the point of where we're going to go now, I'm first ready to request that the data be generated. And then, we need to look at, next steps from there is to educate our public on the different scenarios to pay for it and to see how comfortable our residents will be. This is a very long, expensive problem that hasn't been addressed, and we need to take care of it. So, that's where I'm at currently, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Hamilton?
So, I am also in favor of, actually, all three of the staff's recommendations here regarding the analysis. What I was hearing, just to clarify the discussion from Councilmember Mason regarding the analysis, what I was hearing was that on Election Day, the ballots were went through, and they were put into, this is a yes, this is a no, this is a yes, this is a yes, this is a no, into those piles. But what was not done was, this is a yes, and this is the parcel number and the name for that one. And that level did not happen on Election Day, which I can probably understand, given that it was a public, open process. Which is why, so my understanding is that all the ballots are going to need to be gone through again to get that level of details of that analysis can be done. Is that correct?
Yes, Councilmember Hamilton, just to expound on that. I think it would have been inappropriate for us to read off every ballot and how each individual property are voting. And so, we can undertake an analysis of the demographics and trends. We would return that information without revealing individual votes. And it would be aggregated based on trends, based on the demographics of individual properties. But we would still seek not to identify how individuals voted. I think we heard that as a concern from some members of our community that were unfamiliar with a required property owner election. And so, I think we would need to maintain that with the analysis that's conducted.
Okay, thank you. So, I am in favor of doing the analysis, but also, of course, want to know what it's going to cost before we embark on it. And I know that's the process we will follow. The, I am in favor of considering a general obligation bond or parcel tax, exploring that and focusing on the capital projects and also seeing what you can do regionally and partnering. Just general comments in the post-mortem from all of this. I also had some concerns about the messaging. I felt that messaging that was done, all focused on, was all okay. But I don't think it focused on everything that needed to focus on. And I think that I spoke to many residents as part of this process, trying to convince them to vote yes. And I didn't end up using any of the arguments that were in any of the literature. The prior two arguments that I used with folks were around the fact that the rate had not been raised since 1994. And the analogy that I used with folks is, you go down to Grand Leader and try to buy a sandwich from Mike and give him $4 for that sandwich, because that's what you ate in 1994, you're not going to walk out of there with a sandwich. And that seemed to resonate with folks, because it's just basic math. But what people were really the most upset about was, how did we get here? How did we get to this point where we're so far out of whack? It's been so long since it's been touched. And they just wanted to hear an acknowledgement that, yeah, that was a miss. That was a miss. It should have been addressed sooner. But regardless, we are where we are. So, I was able to convince a few people from no to yes, but not nearly enough, clearly. But using those arguments. And I just want us to, you know, think hard about the messaging for next time if we need to go back, you know, if we're going to be going back to the voters. I just think we need to be a little bit more open about how we got to where we are and acknowledging that we are where we are and what we need to do to get out of it. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Councilmember Saldana?
Thank you. So, I wanted to follow up on a couple of Councilmember Mason's comments. One specifically, so regarding the ability to provide senior discounts on something that we place on a property tax, is that an option for us? Because I think that would definitely be a benefit to the community if that's possible.
I would ask that the city attorney come on. I've talked about this before, but let's let the city attorney provide the answer.
Well, I wish I could, Mr. Salazar and members of the city council. I don't know the answer to that without doing some research. So, we'll take a look at that and come back with you about that. I apologize, I just don't know off the top of my head.
Okay, all right, thank you. And then, also, in terms of other revenue sources, because I heard similar concerns from residents about, you know, the city should be doing everything it can to collect all the revenue that it can before going back to the voters. So, in terms of that, so the, all the other things that I believe that are on our horizon right now are general fund-type taxes. And so, I wanted to get an idea, is that, is an increase in our general fund really going to get us where we need to be with storm drain? Or does storm drain truly need a dedicated funding source that's only going to benefit, just like we with water and sewer? So, I wanted to get a better idea about that, because I think that also strengthens the argument around why we would want to go back out and do anything other than just focus on general fund.
Councilmember Salazar, our stormwater system is an enterprise. Enterprises typically rely on the revenue that comes to that enterprise to fund its operations and the capital expenditures related to that enterprise. RFE has not been increased in nearly 30 years. The revenue no longer captures the cost. Many of those expenditures have to occur. We have to maintain the system we have. We have infrastructure that's needed. If we can't afford it, we apply for grants. When we get a grant, we have to pay for the grant match. That happened this year. We have an option, say, you know what? We're not going to apply for grants because we don't even have the money for the grant match. We're not making that option. We applied for the grants, and we needed to find a way to fund the grant match. That can be general fund obligation. The general fund can pick... The general fund can pick it up. What that comes with is pushing off other needed general fund programs and services and other capital improvements. And so most agencies would look at a enterprise like Stormwater and try to solve that with recovering additional money for that enterprise. And if that is not an option, we still have mandated costs, and so the general fund will have to pay for those costs, and that is just going to come with a trade-off. You know, unfortunately, San Bruno has been an under-resourced city for quite some time, and we have to make very tough challenges every year with what we, what we fund and what we don't fund. And, you know, candidly, at the end of this month, it'll be three years that I've been the city manager here. This has been a year and a half effort. The fee hasn't been increased for 27, for 27 years. When I launched the fiscal sustainability project, it was keenly important to me that we do something about Stormwater, that we take a swing, and you know what? It didn't pass. When we launched that effort, no one wanted to talk about it. Not staff, not members of the community, and it was an effort that I pushed as the, as the city manager of this organization, because I felt that it was critically important to the financial health, because it hadn't been done. And the, the revenue was constantly being eroded by the cost. And so, as I said, on June 22nd, it was a Hallelujah Pass, because we had waited to the very last moment as an organization and as a city to address this, to the point to where, in this current budget year, the fund is negative. And so thankfully, we were able to use federal dollars to cover one year of that million-dollar deficit. We still have a problem. We've had, we've had a problem for more than a decade, and we're committed to continuing to work through a solution. We're committed to debriefing the effort. We are committed to rearticulating. What I will say candidly is that I do not think this organization was not transparent, or that this organization cherry picked images. This is infrastructure that we are not saying, if you don't maintain, that something may happen. Something has happened. We have spent over $1.5 million in the last 24 months because infrastructure failed, because we did not maintain it. And that's, 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 that's a reality. And so we're committed to doing everything we can to continue to debrief the effort, to launch a new effort. But I do take issue with the organization not being transparent. We can absolutely improve, we can absolutely rearticulate, but I do believe the organization did transparently articulate the challenge, and absolutely, going forward, we will, we will adjust.
Thank you for that, city manager, and I wholeheartedly agree with what you're saying, and I can say that that transparency goes back years, and we've had these conversations. We started these conversations long back when we first decided to increase the water and sewer rates. And I remember back then naively asking why we didn't put our sewer rates on the, on the tax bill, on the property tax bill. And I was cautioned then that it would be far more difficult to get an increase if we were to go that direction. So I agree with you that we have always been transparent, we knew this was coming, but we chose to focus on the other two enterprises, and I think that we have made huge strides in both of those. This was one that we knew would be difficult. I think that our predictions were validated with these results. I know I was one of the voices that asked for the postmortem on this. I'm a little less confident that there's any value left there, unless we're absolutely going to go back out for a similar effort, and given the results, I don't know that they would be dramatically different. I do agree with Councilmember Hamilton, perhaps the facts that were stated in the literature didn't hit the point. And I think I would be more concerned in revisiting what, you know, what we were trying to do there and what the message would be, rather than really trying to analyze, you know, the demographics of the votes that came in. I think with as few ballots, I mean, we're talking about, you know, 5,000 total ballots, 1,800 of those being yeses, I don't know that we'd be able to pull anything that's statistically significant out of those few numbers of data points to really help us restrategize how we would go back out. And at the end of the day, we really need to convince the majority of our residents that this, this truly is necessary, and it's important, and that, you know, just finding other revenue sources, other generic revenue sources for the general fund will not necessarily help us in this effort. So I think the majority of the council does want to see some analysis around that. I, I'd like to see the price tag on that before, before committing, but I'm feeling less, I'm feeling that there's less value in that than, than I initially thought there might be, so I wouldn't push heavily on that, and maybe we start looking at, at doing a different type of tax measure. And then finally, just in terms of looking at other alternatives, is there a reason why we couldn't do a storm fee that's similar to our sewer fee, where it's, it's tied to the sort of billed as a service, rather than as something that has to be placed on the, on the, on the tax roll? I think there's reasons why we can't, but I just wanted to throw that out there, get a refresher on that.
Yeah, so we'll look into that, and we'll have the city attorney research that question.
All right, thank you.
Let's go back to Councilmember Mason.
Thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to clarify that when I use the word honest with the residents, I want to just kind of be clear that an example is, in one of the flyers, it was that emergency on San Bruno Avenue, and we had a number of meetings about it. It was quite expensive to fix, and I received an email from a resident with an email attached to it stating that what happened was going to happen about eight or eight, seven or eight years ago. And so when I talk about just being, you know, straightforward with our residents, it's, you know, saying that these are things that we've known about, but they've been deferred, and luckily, nobody was hurt, nobody was injured. But I think at the end of the day, my conversations with a number of residents were ultimately that we need to invest in our stormwater. It does need to be a dedicated fund. I think the issue that I heard over and over was that there were all the other questions that were not answered, and I think at one point or another, they weren't answered for us. I know I've posted some of the videos where questions were answered specifically around stormwater, but I think in the same way that this is invested in, I believe it was four mailings, one of those mailings could have been an FAQ, where we actually go question by question that we've been asked as council members, and just go ahead and respond to them. Because I, my feeling, and I can't speak for all the council members, but is that the city does need to invest its infrastructure, and we have made huge efforts in getting funding, but based on our budget season this year, it's clear that most of our funding sources, even those increases, are already allotted to other needs, also some of which are infrastructure. And I think we need to be very clear about our needs, and kind of how far we've come, and how far we still need to go, because we're really just leveling the bar right now. We had, we really didn't have any money a year ago. And not that we have a whole lot more money now, but I think that there have been a lot of efforts made to generate revenue, and the three areas I just mentioned, short-term rental, charter city transfer tax, and cannabis tax, were responded to during our budget meeting, letting us know where the city was with each one of those. But if you missed that meeting, then you don't know what's going on, and you don't know what efforts are being taken to achieve those. And so when I talk about, you know, responding, I do believe that the majority of these areas that I mentioned are probably some of the most common comments that all of us heard. And should we take this on again, we really should just address them head-on. The other area I just, I wanted to make sure I mentioned is the community foundation. I can't tell you how many people asked about why the community funds weren't being spent on stormwater, and that could have been probably a whole page of itself, not just informing the public around, about what's going on with the community foundation and how those funds are allocated, but also addressing, you know, why those funds were being placed into the rack as opposed to stormwater. And I've responded to many residents around, you know, the process on how the rack was, you know, determined by the residents, et cetera. But I really am just trying to say that I think, you know, this is something that is desperately needed in San Bruno. We are going to have more emergencies if we don't invest in it, but I do think it's really important that as a, as a city, when we communicate with the residents, we've got to, we've got to understand where the residents are coming from, and we have to make sure that our residents' questions are being answered head-on. And I just wanted to see in my notes if I had anything else. Oh, and I, and I would say the other area too, that I heard about was also the Measure G. We approved Measure G, and we're not seeing our streets repaired overnight. And I've told a number of residents about the great presentation that we received a couple of months ago from DPW about this 10-year street repair plan, and that's also an area that I think we should continue to share and communicate with our, with our residents, because there are plans for street repair. We talked about making that information more easily accessible, but I think it just all goes back to this idea of we, we are, we have supported the city, and where has that support, where is that support visually for us to see? So, thank you.
So I've heard from, I think, Vice Mayor and the two council members, kind of about going down, for direction purposes, going down a path of maybe getting some analysis, but then I heard maybe not, but kind of like, let's see what it's going to cost, or maybe going to a bond-type situation. So I don't know if Councilmember Mason spoken, but did you have any suggestions for staff? Next staff, I should say.
I, I think for me, now that we've learned from the earlier presentation that, you know, there's a deadline around when you've got to submit any measures, you know, so for the recall, I think they said it was like June 15th. So i-if we were looking at placing this on a future ballot measure, what would that timeline look like? And then within that timeline, what would the cost be to determine whether it's something that would behoove us to budget this year, or a future, you know, a future, future year? And I'm just saying that because we're, we're going to have an election in 2022, so what does that timeline look like, and what does the cost look like? Thank you.
Vice Mayor Medina.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So at some point, yes, considering the recommendation number three, but that's, that's further down the road. I believe that the initial analysis of the results will be beneficial when, when staff could look at that data. They'll have a better knowledge of where it passed, and where, where, where the effort should be concentrated. For me, in hearing my colleagues' comments about talking to residents, we need, we need to do a little bit better in educating them, and perhaps looking at how the increase won't be so steep. And, and the option three there would fall, in my mind, within that, being that tonight, this, we're not going to solve this tonight, but we need to get ourselves on a path to deal with it. So for me, it's first the data, and then considering the recommendation three, sure, but that's like further down the road with, with study sessions and making sure that the questions from our residents are answered, and they're repeated, and it's referred to. Too often in our city, people may say, well, I didn't know about that, and it's like, well, here's where the information is. And in COVID, in a COVID year, it was very hard to, to, with all the distractions, to let people know how important this really is. So we could tweak it, and I look forward to many meetings on figuring out how we're going to solve this problem, because it's really serious.
Okay, so am I hearing from all, all my colleagues that, let's just go from number five. I think nobody is saying not to continue in those efforts or communications. Is that, is that correct? Is there anybody that disagrees with that statement? I'm seeing no hands, no nods of saying no, so I see that that's five thumbs up. Okay, this is going based on what staff was giving recommendation. On item number one, which is initiate the analysis of the election results, am I hearing from my colleagues that they'd like to have that looked into, get some data, and then come back with a plan that would be like, if we went down this path, it cost this, that path, it cost that? Just wanted, because I've heard a little bit about that, yes, we want some analysis. Is that accurate? Mr. Vice Mayor, yes? Mr. Hamilton, yes? Thank you. Mr. Hamilton?
Well, yes, but again, you know, it's all going to depend on the, on the cost. So yes, so yes, yes, I want us to do analysis. If it's going to cost a billion dollars, then no.
Cost conscious, cost conscious. Mr. Salazar?
I'm going to say no, and unless, you know, number, because number one relates directly to number two. So unless we're saying we definitely want to do number two, we want to go another run at it, I don't see the value in doing number one. So I'm, I'm, I'm very cool on one, two. I would say no, and I would rather have staff focus on three and four personally.
Okay, Councilmember Mason.
I guess I'm just trying to figure out, can we just get a cost proposal on if five is the one nobody's interested in, and one to four? I mean, I guess I'm a little confused. I'm trying to figure out, are we, are we giving direction to hire a consultant, or is this being done by the analysts in-house?
Okay, well, first, I was trying to get on number five, and I felt that all five of us, to my knowledge, were okay with that to participate in possible future regional efforts. So I didn't hear anybody say no to that.
Oh, okay, so...
Are you feeling no to that? I just, because the four said yes, just let's clarify.
Yeah, I think I'm, without knowing enough about the regional effort, I would say no to that. We're really behind, and I'm worried that, you know...
Well, but if there's possible funding, it's like, why would you turn it down? If there's available funding that we're able to get through whatever it might be, that's, that's fine. So it's four to one to participate in possible future regional effort. That has been given direction to staff. Now we're back to the initiate the analysis. Councilmember Salazar felt that, you know, cost conscious, I think that Councilmember Hamilton is on the same, but maybe, maybe I'm taking this off a little bit, I don't know. Let's go to Councilmember Hamilton, and then our city manager.
Yes, I, just a really quick comment after Councilmember Salazar's comment. I don't think that the analysis, doing the analysis only benefits us for number two. I also agree that going, going back and doing this whole same process again would be probably foolish and wasteful, but I do think that the, that understanding from a demographic perspective, how people voted, would, might yield us important information for number three, for targeting our, targeting our messaging and whatnot. That's, that's why I see a little value, not because I'm interested going back through the, through this, the same process again. Thank you.
Can I clarify something, Mr. Mayor?
Please.
Only that, you know, when we look at the election from the number one results compared to the number three, we're not talking about the same group of people anymore, because we're talking property owners versus registered voters. So it's a completely different body of people, so making that, that leap from one to the other, I think would be difficult. So, I mean, if some of these people, it may not be the same people at all, and they may count in different groups, whether, you know, one person that owns several properties would get several votes, whereas in the other way, you know, it's, it's individual voters. So I think there's less opportunity to, to... So, I think there's less opportunity to to transfer that that data. And that's why I'm I'm thinking, unless unless we do another 218, there is limited value in that data.
Thank you. Councilmember, city manager?
For, just to clarify, number one, we would develop a scope of work and bring that to the city council for review and approval. It is my belief that we would need to utilize the services of an outside entity to do a comprehensive demographic analysis. At this point, I can't say whether those results would be solely beneficial for a similar effort or may provide information that is beneficial for a general bond obligation. For example, if we see trends where larger assessment, if sort of anyone over X amount of assessment voted no, that may factor in the type of general obligation bond that we go out for, the series of the bonds, so how how much we do at at any given time. We may bond for 5 million. If the data shows that, you know what, to bond for 10 million, it may be a no. And so, we may actually stretch out the time horizon at which we would undertake the bonds to do the work. And so, if the city council says, proceed with number one, what we would do is we would identify the scope of work, and we would come back to you with that scope of work and the projected costs. With regard to number three, we would need to begin work to understand the the general obligation bond process and the parcel tax. You know, while we have, it seems like a long time till November 2022, we already have direction for a number of potential initiatives that would be on the November 22 election cycle, a charter city, and a potential real estate transfer tax for commercial properties being one. We really can't do all of that work in the first six months of 2022 to prepare to put something on the ballot. And so, should we look to proceed down with this effort, we're really going to have to put that into our work program with all of the other strategic initiatives, and most importantly, ballot initiatives that we will be considering for '22. And so, work would begin on this in this fiscal year. And so, that's why that's why it's up there, because we we would need to identify the precise path forward. And then, as we've talked about, all of these have an articulation process behind them, an articulation process. We cannot have an agency campaign for passage, but we can articulate actual information.
Okay. You folks have heard the analysis from the city manager, so what is your folks' thoughts on item one? Councilmember Mason?
I'm sorry, Medina, I I'm just trying to figure out, is there any reason we can go back again for another initiative with similar to this one at a future rate, once we have more information and done in-house? I don't know if I'm, I don't see that option here.
Councilmember Mason, that is option number two, return to voters with...
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, okay.
...of the need.
Okay, I I'm sorry, I interpreted that as something different.
Vice Mayor?
Oh, I I just wanted to express my support for getting getting a cost estimate for the analysis of the election. That's very important to be able to to do, and it could be very cheap, or we're going to find out. We don't know how much it's going to cost, and letting the city manager get a quote isn't going to cost us anything. So, I think we should move on, do the vote on number one, and and keep on voting.
Well, okay. I I just want to make sure that city manager, we're on the same page, because I'm I'm hearing you, and I'm I'm hearing colleagues, and I don't know that it's connected. Maybe I'm incorrect in that statement.
So, with with number one, if if the council says, proceed, we're interested in potentially analyzing the election results, we would contact companies that do network, develop a scope of work, and return to the city council with a estimated cost of that work. What I have not said up until this point is that we will take another look at our ability to do it in-house and what that could involve for other work that is on the city's work program, as well as, based on the scope of work, if we have the skill set to do that in-house. What I said earlier is that it's it's my recommendation that we would ideally use an outside firm to have a a very professional, comprehensive analysis. But again, that will, my recommendation to you will also be informed by the cost of that, right? If if that's cost prohibitive, I may say, you know, if if the council wants to do this, here's what we can do in-house with our own resources. But you're not saying do the work, you're essentially saying, out of the possible options for next steps, we're interested in looking into number one.
Okay. Thank you for clarity. So, Mr. Medina, you're on board on that. Is that correct? Yes. Mr. Hamilton? Ms. Mason, thank you. Thank you for the thumbs and the voice. Ms. Mason?
Yeah, I think that's fine.
Mr. Salazar?
I'm still on it.
I'll go ahead with the yes, as far as that, so you have the direction there. You have direction so far. Basically, it was four to one on number five, four to one on number one. City manager, do you want to pause at that point, or do you still want us to go over whether it's number two or number three, or what are your thoughts at this time?
If if the council is interested in us adding this, I think, to to our work program to look at a possible general obligation bond or parcel tax around our other ballot initiatives that we may consider for 20, November 22, you can do that now, or we can have those discussions later. Does the decision have to be made tonight? Absolutely not. We can schedule a a study session. But what I would say is that, as the city council knows, the work program that that we approved and funded, not everything on that work program will get done. And so, if we are going to potentially do this, knowing sooner rather than later is important. So, I can organize the work that staff has to do, because this has a definite timetable to it, and it has an alignment to the other ballot items that we may be considering. And and all of those potential ballot items really need to come to the city council fully baked at the same time, so you can make a informed decision on which items you would like to put on the ballot. Saying, consider a GO or a parcel tax, not sort of saying we're, you're 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 definitely going to do that effort, and if you would like, we can sort of schedule further conversations at at another time. But if staff has to begin work on it, we need the direction, and we really need to put it put it within the the work program. And so, we really can't wait, I I would say, longer than October for that for that direction. And that that would really be pushing up to sort of not leaving a lot of time for us to do work in 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 '21 on it. And I I do think it's absolutely critical that we do some work in in '21 on this, that it's an even remote possibility that the council wants to consider for '22.
Okay. Councilmember Salazar?
And and so, it's, it was this sort of lack of concrete direction that caused me to try to put the brakes on on approving the budget. And so, I I, you know, I think it is, I think it's critical, and I think it's time-sensitive, and so, I I want to definitely make a a decision to work that into the work plan, you know, whether it's going to be two, three, or four. But I I think we need to identify a path forward sooner rather than later. I'd rather not delay that, because this is critical. It's a, it's a huge gap, and we definitely can't fill it from the from the general fund based on, you know, what we projected. So, something's got to give, and so, I'd like to see us start work on it soon.
Okay. Vice Mayor Medina?
I'm apprehensive on, I understand the severity and the need to do something with this. Adding another initiative to an overloaded, currently, we don't know what is going to get be done, what the status of everything is. We just got out of budget. So, if our city manager says that we could wait a little bit, then I say we wait, and then we get an update on where we are with cannabis, where we are with with Airbnb and and all these other things. And we can have further discussions on it. Clearly, we're going to do something, but it, that decision doesn't have have to happen right now at this time. That's what I heard from our city manager, and I think that's what we should do.
I think you said October at the latest.
Okay. So, we have some, we have some time. We never, we never did prioritize our strategic initiatives, and and that's something that I think we really need to do.
Okay.
That we can't do everything, or we need to finish, Mr. Mayor, just 30 seconds more. So, when when stuff like this comes up, where it's really important to do something, we need to be able to say, take something off, because it all won't get done, and we need to, we need to prioritize. That's what I think how every household, responsible household operates. You you could only do what needs to be done at that time, and you can't do everything. I'm done.
Thank you, sir. Anything else from Mr. Hamilton or Mrs. Mason? Is that a no, then? I'm I'm trying to figure where the council is to answer the city manager on direction. Councilmember Mason?
Yeah, I think, I mean, I think we, I I think we need to move forward. I think we started this process. I think we need to move forward with it, especially while it is fresh and the residents have essentially responded to the initial effort. I also, I also just want to, I guess, where my, what part of my confusion is, is normally when you're looking at your options, if you're going to hire an outside party, you're, they're going to let you know what the, what the possibilities are within each option. And I feel like we're being asked to prioritize options without really fully knowing what it is that we're prioritizing, and we may be leaving something off. So, for example, the future regional effort, you know, if if you're telling me, hey, there's money available, there has been money available in the last decade, then I would, of course, want to support something where there's money available. But if you're saying that there's a possible future regional effort, nothing really is known about it right now, and, you know, San Bruno, a smaller city compared to our neighboring cities, may may benefit from it. I don't know that I want more staff time to go to number five than, you know, some of the other options here. So, I I'm fine going through each one of them. I think I do find this to be somewhat confusing. I think it's, I think the Stormwater Initiative as a whole needs to continue to be a priority for the city. I guess I would just like to better understand or better understand each one of these options and what it is really that we're trying to get out of them. And I'm just not feeling like we've been provided that answer.
Mr. Hamilton?
So, regarding the, I mean, I already said my piece on number one. Number five, I think, you know, I, it's hard to know what we don't know, you know, the the, we need, it sounds like we just need to keep our ears open and and let let all the players know that if there is a county initiative that comes forward, that we would be interested in hearing about it and potentially participating, but not knowing what it is, you know, we can't commit to anything, as I'm sure no other city would, without knowing what it, what it's going to be. Or maybe that's, maybe it's going to be a a similar, a similar tax, but a a county tax that that would end up with a a much larger pool of money that would need to be split up among all the cities, and who knows what our portion of that would be? It's really hard to tell what 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 that would be, but I think we need to, you know, keep our ears and eyes open on that one. For number three, for number three, yeah, I mean, I think we need to, I think we need to pursue that. Do I think we need to drop everything this month and and push forward with it? No. And the the city manager said the said the same thing, but it is something that we're going to need to to focus on in the near, in the near term, because, you know, the the Prop 218 process failed, and we need to fund Stormwater. We can't, we, you know, as everyone's said repeatedly tonight and for the last several months, we can't continue this way, and we have to, we have to address it.
Okay. So, I'll summarize in that, Mr. Salazar would like to proceed on on three. I I've heard Vice Mayor would like to wait until possibly October. I've heard from Mr. Hamilton, I believe, want to proceed with three, keeping it at the the line. Linda, I know you were, I'm sorry, Councilmember Mason, you were talking about just not knowing, like, you know, I don't know that there's any regional efforts yet, but I don't want us to turn away if there an opportunity or opportunity opens. For me, I believe that that we need to, this is something that we have to take care of. We have to to move on, and so, we need to give staff those, that that kind of direction to to do that it is important. I see that the city manager has his hand up.
Let me attempt to follow a way forward, starting from the bottom. With regard to number five, there have been preliminary conversations about a regional effort. Councilmember Hamilton is exactly right. We do not know exactly what that will be. We do not know when that will materialize. We will certainly return to the city council with any information that develops and provide clarity at that time. This was really an effort to let council know that there may be a regional effort. There there's been a county-wide Stormwater Sea Level Rising Resiliency Agency created. They're looking at regional projects. They're talking about finding a a permanent funding source for the agency, and there may be funds that could support the city of the city of San Bruno. What I mentioned is typically, these regional efforts do not fund all of the local infrastructure. They fund strategic grants, one of which may be in San Bruno, right? But but my professional assessment is that number five is not mutually exclusive to to proceeding with other options to fund our local infrastructure. And so, of the options that we talked about to look at additional ways to fund our local interests, our our local infrastructure was to possibly consider a a general obligation bond, and we would prepare all that information and provide the city council with the full complement of analysis that you need to make that final decision. We're, we're not there yet. We're simply talking about possible avenues to go down, and so, you know, we can't advise on the work until we do the work. But I understand that there's a reluctance to say, potentially even go down that avenue. And so, what I want to proffer is that your strategic initiatives were funded, and the budget that was approved on June 22nd. And so, we are 16 days into the budget cycle, 13 days into budget cycle for those initiatives. I've committed to the city council to come to you with quarterly updates, and on the ticker bill that you guys have seen, there is a meeting at the August 27 meeting where I want to come and give you guys an update on your funded initiatives, where things fit, and give you a staff's update. Why don't we talk about this then, when we're talking about the the full complement of strategic issues? With regard to number one, I think what I've heard is a majority of the city council say, put together information on what it would take to analyze the ballot responses to provide some information on the demographic analysis, and, you know, we're not saying yes now, but we'll, when when you, when staff comes back with what the scope of work would be, estimated costs, we'll make the decision at that time. I think that's...
That is what I have heard by more than a majority, at least a four to one yes. Correct. Same on the number five. The three is what you want, may want to just clarify for us. I mean, you already did. Please, don't, don't, you, you, you have... I mean, you already did, please, don't, don't, uh, you, what, you, you have clarified it, but my understanding is that we had a majority of the council that wished to proceed with three. And I can be corrected, I know Councilmember Mason has her, her hand up.
Count, yes. Um, Mayor Medina, I, I would just sort of clarify that I think a majority of the council has said not to proceed with number three, uh, but, um, do the preliminary work to articulate to the city council what would be involved in a potential general obligation bond or parcel tax, but I wouldn't want the public to, uh, walk away tonight that the council hasn't made the decision. Uh, it is simply to, uh, begin looking, uh, at that, at that avenue.
You're correct, that was my understanding as well. It was just because, as you said too, we need to know, we have next November, your, your concern to us is can't just keep waiting, you know, and, and then we have a short window with the other elements that are, are put on us. Um, Councilmember Mason, then Vice Mayor Medina?
Thank you, City Manager Gergen, for that, um, clarification. So I'll just, uh, so I would support one to three and five, and I just would also, um, reiterate and look, or not reiterate, but just say that when we're looking at the possibilities, also consider, um, other public entities and what they're looking at, um, potential, whether they're looking at potential taxes or any other measures as well, so that we're not competing, uh, with each other. So, thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, just wanted to be clear that when our city manager said it, we could, we, we'll return to this and it would need to be done by October, that was absolutely fine. That's, that was my main point. Like, tonight, we're not saying, yes, we're gonna pursue it, that we're gonna make that decision, and with the clarity provided by the city manager, that staff will be doing some of that work, and we're gonna get updates on, on other things. So I'm, I'm fine with just moving forward in that direction.
Mayor Medina, you're on mute.
That, that doesn't help. Um, I was saying, City Manager, thank you. City Manager, do you feel that, uh, it's solidified to the direction from council for staff?
Yes, uh, we will continue, um, to participate in conversations about a, uh, potential regional effort. We will return to the city council with, uh, a scope work and estimated cost and timing for a demographic analysis of the prior 218 effort, uh, and we will continue, uh, uh, talk about, uh, funding, uh, uh, mechanisms, uh, potentially a general obligation bond or a parcel tax, uh, when we, uh, uh, talk about and receive an update on our strategic initiatives, uh, because this effort really would be a significant, a significant one and need to be dovetailed with other potential ballot initiatives.
Okay, thank you. Um, okay, before we move on to item B, which will be the appointments, um, for the vacancies on community commissions and boards, I'm gonna have us take a five-minute break, uh, just to stretch, uh, water, et cetera, and then we will return back here, and then we will proceed with the last item of content. If we can begin to reconvene?
My city iPad, where I, where I explore my notes, decided to do its, its periodic update right now.
Are you okay?
I'm, I'm, I'm just scrambling to get my notes from other, from other sources.
Okay, um, well, why don't we go ahead and reconvene the San Bruno City Council meeting? We are on, uh, item six, we are on conduct of business, we are on item B, and that is appoint citizens to fill vacancies on commissions, boards, and committees. Uh, one, two, well, we have five different, um, groups, and we'll go ahead and just take them as we see them listed, and it's in alphabetical order, but just to have a flow to it. As we have discussed and was put in the document, uh, that we would go ahead and have, um, ask the city clerk to assist us, of course, uh, go to the first group, which would be the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee, and, oh, ready, ready to go. And, uh, then, the first round will be a nomination, and then everybody's gonna see if I got this right, nomination and a second to go forward. We'll see, we'll go down the list, see who that is, and then we will bring those persons who have been nominated and seconded up to a vote, which each council member will give their vote to the candidate that they would like to see select. So before we start, are there any questions, Vice Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Um, is Tom Kuhn an official candidate?
Yes, Tom Kuhn is a candidate for Parks and Recreation Commission, as well as a candidate for the Citizens Revenue Measure Oversight Committee.
Okay, thank you. I didn't see the bottom, bottom of that screen. I appreciate, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Okay, seeing that, um, I think we are good at this point, I will, um, allow our city, uh, city, uh, sorry, uh, ask our city clerk, uh, to go ahead and read the name, and then we can see if there is a, um, well, why don't you read the four names that we have, this is for bicycle and pedestrian, we have two partial term seats that are expiring on October thirty-first.
Yes, and to clarify, I don't know, you cut off there at the end, but these seats will expire October thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four. We have four applicants, um, for the council to consider this evening. The first applicant, and I should apologize right off the bat for all applicants, I hope I'm pronouncing your names correctly, so I just wanna make that clear. The first applicant for Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee is Robert Anasetti. The second applicant is Jules Bruguet. The third applicant is Roberta Hannibal. The fourth applicant is Lisa Huang. And I did want to notate that Mr. Anasetti, um, although he was unable to interview on June third, which was the evening that the city council interviewed candidates, um, for all of these bodies, Mr. Anasetti did say that he still wanted to be considered for appointment, that is why he's on this list.
Thank you, uh, for, uh, uh, doing the names and clarifying, and now from my colleagues, uh, you can start raising your virtual hand, and I'll start calling upon you in that order for nominations and or seconds. Uh, first is Vice Mayor Medina.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to, uh, to nominate Jules.
Is there a second?
There's a second.
I'm sorry, for clerk, was that Councilmember Hamilton who seconded?
You're correct.
Thank you.
Let's move to, um, Councilmember Salazar, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to nominate, uh, Robert Anasetti.
Is there a second to, uh, Mr. Anasetti? I will go ahead and second that. Are there any other nominations from council? Any other nominations from council? Okay, with, um, this time.
I have a nomin, another nomination.
I'm sorry, go ahead, please.
Um, I'm sorry, let me just go back to my notes, give me one second. I believe it was Roberta Hannibal? Yep.
Okay, there's been a motion, is there a second? Is there a second? Not having a second? Then we have two, are there any more nominations? So we have two vacancies, we have, uh, two, um, persons that have been, uh, motioned and seconded. Is there any, um, we can do roll call? Um, it's kind of, there's two running for two, so I mean, um, basically we can maybe have one motion that appoints both, or, um, I'll, I'll ask council.
Mr. Mayor, I'll, I'll make a motion that we, uh, approve that the two, um, the two candidates that have been, um, nominated and seconded.
Is there a second to the motion? Thank you. There's been a motion and a second. Uh, roll call, please, city clerk?
Councilmember Hamilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Mason?
Um, aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Marty Medina?
Aye.
Mayor Rico Medina?
Aye.
Okay, so moving forward to round two, we will now, in round two, begin taking voting. We have two applicants for consideration.
Yeah, city clerk, we went ahead, since, we, we went ahead, since there were only two that were nominated and two vacancies, we went ahead and unanimously approved.
Oh, I, I see, okay, I'm sorry, I apologize.
No, 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 no worries.
I was so excited to do round two, I'm sorry. Okay.
For clarifying, just to make sure, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, next, we will move on to the Citizens Revenue Measure Oversight Committee, and I do apologize, I'm trying to zoom my screen in, and it just, it's not wanting to play nicely with me, so it's not letting me. Um, I'll keep working on that. We have two short-term vacancies, one seat will expire on October thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two, and one seat will expire on October thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four. Um, how this will work is the first appointment will fall to the October thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two seat, and the second appointment will fall to the two thousand twenty-four seat, and I will make that known when, um, motion is clear. We have three applicants for the Citizens Revenue Measure Oversight Committee. Those applicants are Jim Evangelist, Ariella Fiorinelli, and Tom Kuhn.
Okay, we have, uh, for nominations, and we'll start with Mr. Hamilton first, please.
I would like to nominate Jim Evangelist.
Is there a second for Mr. Evangelist?
A second.
Okay, uh, there's been, there's been, uh, a motion by Hamilton, it was kind of a tie, but we'll give it to Councilmember Mason, uh, for the second. And now, are there other nominations, Vice Mayor Medina?
Yes, I'd like to, uh, to nominate Ariella Fiorinelli, is that how that's pronounced?
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, so there's a second, this time Salazar, uh, got there first, so, uh, we'll have a motion and a second. Um, are there any other nominations? Councilmember Mason? You, you're on mute. There you go. No? Oh, okay. All right, so there are, um, two nominations, um, and there are two vacancies, as clerk already described about the, uh, timeframes of them, so basically with, uh, the two, I don't know that we need to go to round two, because there are two vacancies. Uh, city clerk, how would we propose, um, is it the one used to got nominated first?
I would, although the council, if it pleases the council, you can, uh, decide who obtains which seat, however the council would like to proceed.
Okay. Let's, uh, see, uh, let's see if we can, uh, get this all done in round one. Um, bottom line, we have two candidates for two slots, it's just a matter of, uh, where they're, uh, it's twenty-two or twenty-four.
Oh, I got it, sorry. Sorry, I fixed, I fixed it.
I went big.
Mr. Mayor, I'll, I'll make the motion that we approve the two candidates with the first candidate nominated to get the long term and the second candidate to get the short term.
Yeah, there's been a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Mason?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Marty Medina?
Aye.
Mayor Rico Medina?
Aye.
And to clarify, this is for Ariella Fiorinelli to obtain the seat that expires on October thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two, and for Jim Evangelist to obtain the seat that expires October thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four. Moving on, let's see if anybody will let me zoom before I do anything.
Parks and Recreation Commission, one vacancy to expire on ten thirty-one, twenty twenty-four.
Yes, we have three applicants. We have Jules Bruguet, Lisa Huang, and Tom Kuhn. Um, let me check one thing, one moment. Please keep in mind that you have just pointed Jules Bruguet to the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee. Three applicants, Jules Bruguet, Lisa Huang, and Tom Kuhn.
Uh, Mr. Salazar?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to nominate, uh, Tom Kuhn.
Second.
There's, uh, Salazar Medina, um, M. Medina for that? Uh, other nominations, Councilmember Mason?
No, I was gonna nominate the same, that was his, his first choice was Park and Rec, so I, I support that.
Councilmember Medina, I mean, sorry, Vice Mayor Medina, any other nominations? Is there no? No, okay, no.
Sorry, I, you only get one, right?
No, we can nominate more? No, we can nominate more, Councilmember Salazar? You have your hand up.
I'm sorry, sir, that was a residual hand.
Okay, and Councilmember Mason, yours is a residual? Okay, all right, so, we have, again, this is one partial term, a seat expiring on October thirty first, two thousand twenty-four, we have one person that has been nominated, do we have a motion or action from council?
I'll make a motion that we appoint Tom Kuhn to the Parks and Rec Committee.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, roll call, please.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Mason?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Marty Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Rico Medina?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Now, thank you.
That's Tom Kuhn.
Yes, thank you, now we'll move on to Parks and Recreation Commission, still, this is the youth representative, there is one vacancy.
I'd like to nominate Adam Brier.
Is there a second?
I will second.
Thank you, there's a motion and second, there are no other listed, is there any other nominations? Seeing no other nominations from council, is there any action by my colleagues?
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Adam Zibbier as a youth representative.
Second.
Thank you, there's a motion, Medina, seconded, Salazar, roll call, please.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Mason?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Marty Medina?
Aye.
Mayor Rico Medina?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, now we'll move on to our final body, which is the Traffic, AP, and Parking Commission, one vacancy to expire on ten thirty-one, two thousand twenty-four.
Now, I do, before we take any nominations, I do want to note that since Jim Evangelist was just appointed to the Citizens Revenue Measure Oversight Committee, the bylaws of that committee does state that there, he cannot serve on any other board, commission, or committee, so, although he is appearing as an applicant here for you to vote on, he is actually not eligible at this point to serve on this body, so, the applicant you have before you is Roberta Hannibal for this partial term seat.
And thank you, and correct on, thank you reminding us of the bylaws, Councilmember Salazar?
Thank you, sir, I would like to make a motion to appoint our only candidate in this category to the TSPC.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Yeah, I'm going to go forward and say that there was a motion and second, and let's do roll call.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Mason? Councilmember, oh, sorry.
I'm just wondering if we should ask, because, I'm just, let me go, but, wasn't Roberta Hannibal also just selected?
Roberta Hannibal was an applicant for the B-PAC Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee.
Although we chose Robert, that's, okay, I'm sorry, that's.
You didn't get a second.
Gotcha, gotcha, okay, okay, that's fine, I'm, I.
Is that an aye?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Marty Medina?
Aye.
Mayor Rico Medina?
Aye.
Motion carries.
That's quick, good job, everyone.
Nice job.
Okay, with that, we're going to move on to item seven, comments from council members, if council members, and thank you, city clerk, for your help and assistance, council members, if you have anything that you want to conclude on, please raise your virtual hand now, we'll take a look, and I'm going to go into German if I don't see any hands, Councilmember Hamilton?
Just quickly, I want, I want to give a shout out and a thank you to the San Mateo Resource Conservation District and the San Bruno Fire Department and our, and our fire marshal for organizing the chipper program, which took place, at least in my neighborhood, on this past Monday, which allowed us to clear, clear trees and brush from close to our homes to create defensible space, and they came by, they stacked all the branches out at the curb, and they came by and with the chipper and took care of it, it was a wonderful program, my first time participating in it, the crew came by on Monday morning, I had a fairly sizable pile of branches and vegetation to take care of, some of it courtesy of our, of our vice mayor and his son, who graciously helped me with some of it, and they, they actually, they were at my house for less than ten minutes, took care of the entire pile, chipped it, and actually swept and leaf blew, and there was not even, not even a leaf was left behind, it was, it was very amazing watch, and it was just a great program, and I encourage all residents to take advantage of it when it comes back, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hamilton, and it's, thank you for letting us know, Mr. Medina is available to assist, Councilmember Mason?
Yeah, I just wanted to congratulate everybody that was just appointed to their new, their new commitments, I'll call them, thank you for your time and for your sacrifice to be in these organizations, I'll call them an organization, because they're all kind of their own, they have their own functions that really contribute really to San Bruno, so, congratulations, and I'm glad that some of them, I believe, got their first choices, so, I think the more passionate you are about something, the better it is for San Bruno. I also just wanted to correct the statement that was made earlier around the special election, the original request that had been made was what the cost would be to add the item to the gubernatorial special election, so, while I'm glad to hear the cost of a special election, because it's outrageously expensive and we can't afford it, I just want to be clear that what was requested was just the cost around adding the measure to the gubernatorial election, and unfortunately, we were not going to make that cutoff anyway, so, thank you, and thank you to everybody who worked on the Fourth of July, I do not envy those nights away from home, thank you.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I wanted to thank staff and for the, the effort this week at Palm Laura Field, for arranging the wonderful weather and, and having a band out there, it was great, seeing so many smiling faces, and all the good work that was put in to, to fix the grandstands and to fix the snack bar, that's one, one set of thanks, and I also wanted to encourage people to continue to be safe as, as they're moving, going around and make sure, and encourage others to get vaccinated, come downtown and see, shop downtown, shop local San Bruno, and I wanted to thank Nancy Florman for the effort behind the planters and all the volunteers behind it, to, it really looks nice, you know, at first, it was kind of tough as it was growing in, but it's really nice to see the flowers and, and the care that's been taken in those locations, so, thank you.
Thank you, I see no other hands, again, the vice mayor had commented on the renovation of the grandstand and as well as the concession booth, which was by, again, as we know, a lot of folks that gave up their time and their energy, and it is appreciated, and thank you to staff for facilitating that that day, and yes, if that's one thing that the council wants to take credit for and say that we were unanimous on that weather day, I think we truly were, and it was enjoyable, and also, thank you to the staff for their reports and the city clerk for your clarification on your, your report today, that I understood it too, and I want to, as Councilmember Mason said, as far as congratulating all those that, A, stepped up to volunteer for the city that they call home, as well as those that got appointed, and once again, congratulations to Judith Pacini for the mayor's award, well deserved, with that said, we're going to go ahead and adjourn to the next regular city council meeting, which will be held on July twenty-seven, two thousand twenty-one at seven P.M., everybody have a good rest of the week and be safe.